Call the April three city council meeting to order. Commissioner Smith, if you give us the prayer, pledge and invocation, please, sir.
Let us pray. Our Father God would come once again, thankful for the many blessings that have soared upon us for this opportunity to continue to be servants of this city. We ask you to lead, guide and direct our path that whatever we do shall be pleasing and acceptably in your sight. In thy son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fact of the day. On April the third nineteen forty-eight, President Harry S Truman signed the Economic Assistance Act, which authorized the creation of a program that will help the nations of Europe recover and rebuild after the devastation wrought by World War Two. Commonly known as the Marshall Plan, it aims to stabilize Europe economically and politically so that European nations would not fall to communist parties. Fact of the day.
All right. First up, our ladies in green, Apopka Art and Foliage Festival. Boy, how.
I thought we were having a, I guess we weren't.
Anyway, we will, we've got a proclamation. This is what the sixty-second, sixty-seventh year of the Apopka Art and Foliage? Yes, yes. So we are so excited to have you ladies here today. And so we've got a proclamation and we'll have somebody come up and speak and then we'll get, grab a picture if that's possible. So let me read the proclamation. Whereas the Apopka Women's Club was organized sixty-seven years ago and has been instrumental in sponsoring the Apopka Art and Foliage Festival for many years. It is a city of Apopka's pleasure to be a part of the sixty-second annual Apopka Art and Foliage Festival two thousand twenty-four. And whereas the city of Apopka has long been known as the indoor foliage capital of the world, the Apopka Women's Club has expanded the foliage displays to attract a broader range of foliage enthusiasts, making the Apopka Art and Foliage Festival one of the premier festivals in central Florida. And whereas Kitlein Nelson Park is the site of the two thousand twenty-four Apopka Art and Foliage Festival, providing a scenic and welcoming atmosphere for the thousands of visitors to the festival. And whereas the city council and the citizens of the city of Apopka want to recognize and commend the Apopka Women's Club for providing this family-oriented entertainment for our community. And whereas the city council invites all citizens to join the Apopka Women's Club in extending a warm welcome to the many visitors during the two thousand twenty-four Apopka Art and Foliage Festival. Now therefore, our Brian Nelson, Mayor of Apopka, Apopka, Florida, due by the virtue of what Wes invested in me, do hereby proclaim April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth as Art and Foliage Festival Weekend. So who's, who's our? Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor Nelson and city commissioners. We are very proud to say that this is our sixty-second year. This festival will be bigger and better than ever. We're almost at capacity right now with artists, crafters, concessions and foliage specialists. So you need, everybody needs to come out and see what's new. We're going to have a spotlight plant this year. Thank you, Mayor Nelson. And a lot of new stuff, crazy hats will be back. So it'll be a lot of fun, a lot of food. Please come out and visit with us. Look for the green shirt ladies. If you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them for you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. So let's. What's that? Yeah, yeah. I'm gonna miss you my shit.
Yeah.
Oh my God, everybody's gone.
See you ladies.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes, yes. Glad to have you all down here. While they're getting, lining out, Mr. Vasquez, you want to say something? I know you're, how long have you been a member of Women's Club?
I just made ten years with them.
Ten years.
Ten years. It's a great organization. They, they participate in just about everything in the city.
Yep, good. Okay, Joe Patton, employee recognition service pen.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So today is our quarterly recognition of service for all of our employees. What I wanted to do is mention names and the years of service of those individuals that are not here, not present, and then talk a little bit about those that are present. So first we have Zachary Suffer, Fire Department. He's in suppression. He's had five years with the city. Matthew Graves, Fire Department, suppression, ten years with the city. John Howell, Fire Department, twenty years with the city. Joshua Brasher, Police Department, Communications and Dispatch. He's been here five years, celebrating five years. Timothy Crutcher, Police Department, Field Services, ten years. Fernando Reyes Perez, Police Department, Field Services, fifteen years. Brian Vosio, Police Department, Support Services, fifteen years. Daniel Ribnikar, Public Services Department, Utility Plant Maintenance, ten years. Cortary Roberson, Public Services Department, Sanitation for ten years. We have two special guests today that are both celebrating twenty-five years with the city. So first we have Robin Eldridge. She's in the Community Development Department in the Building Division. So come on up, Robin. Don't be shy. I know you're not, I know you're not shy.
And she's not.
I know you're not, I know, I know. Yeah, never. So Robin was born at Portsmouth Naval Hospital in Virginia and has one sister Barbara. She began her career with the city of Apopka on February first nineteen ninety-nine as a secretary one for the Fire Chief's Office. She transferred to the Building Division of the Community Development Department on July fifth two thousand four as a secretary and was promoted to permit clerk on April ninth two thousand fifteen. On June twenty-seventh two thousand twenty-two, she was promoted to the position of permit technician where she continues to serve today. She also looks back in appreciation for many friends she has made during her twenty-five years of service. Robin has been married to Wiley Eldridge for forty-three years and they have two cats, Trouble and Patches. I wonder who named Trouble. I wonder who named that. Oh, okay, all right. In her spare time, she enjoys searching for shark teeth in Inglewood, Florida, where, with her golden girlfriends. One day, when she decides to retire, she would like to travel just everywhere. Thanks, Robin.
Thank you, Robin.
So next, celebrating twenty-five years, Scott Pyle, Public Services Department, Fleet Management, twenty-five years of service. So Scott started working for the city of Apopka on February twenty-eighth nineteen ninety-nine as an equipment mechanic trainee within the Fleet Management Division. And then on February twenty-eighth two thousand two, he was reclassified to an equipment mechanic which, where, where he serves now. Scott was short, he was short-winded on the description of what, you know? Yeah, short, sweet, simple. So thank you, everybody. Picture time, I guess.
We get a picture.
Can we get a photo with them?
All right, Cliff?
Yes, Commissioner, we are going to now retreat to the conference room in the back for a shade meeting, a private shade meeting with the lawyers that are representing the city in the Southwick litigation. And this is a special exception under two eighty-six oh eleven eight A so that the city attorney, actually the attorneys representing the city in this case, can obtain counsel advice on the pending litigation on matters that are permitted in such a meeting. Attendance at the meeting is limited to the council members, the city administrator, the city attorney, outside litigation attorneys, Doug Noah and Parker J Watts. And the subject of the meeting is confined to settlement negotiations and strategy sessions related to litigation expenditures. Again, the citation is two eight six point oh one one eight B. Based on previous experience, this should be an hour or less. And once that meeting is over, we will reconvene here and take any action appropriate, if any.
All right. We'll be back.
Alright, Brian. Susan, where's Susan?
We gotta open the meeting.
We gotta open the meeting now, 2:18.
All right, we'll call the city council meeting back to order. Attorney Shepherd.
Mayor and commission, as you know, we just adjourned the shade meeting session. And now, if it's a desire of council to make a motion or take any action based on the shade meeting, this is the time to do so.
You might want to bring forward a motion?
I, okay, I'll make the motion. I make the motion that we accept. Kind of help me out now.
The conciliation agreement as proposed by the government.
The conciliation agreement as proposed by the...
I think it's HUD, actually.
HUD, HUD, okay.
Subject to?
Subject to...
You want to help, Vice Mayor?
That was the, oh, the amendment?
Yes.
To the development agreement and the educational...
And the language that clarifies essentially...
The language that clarifies...
What the council's role was, or the commission's was in the language that ended up in the development agreement and was being enforced.
Okay.
Something along those lines. I think, Parker, does that get you where you need to be? Okay, so there's a motion. Now there needs to be a second and a vote.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, Parker. Appreciate it. All right, approval of the minutes. You got four sets of minutes. Any of them need to be modified? If not, look for a motion to approve.
Uh, okay, here it is. So move.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez, second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Gender review, anything, Chuck?
No changes, Mayor.
Presentation, GFOA certificate of achievement.
Mayor, commissioners, Chuck, the city administration, what I've got before you is, y'all should have this book that was presented to you from Mrs. Sherman. And we received notice, I received notice, and I'll just go into the first paragraph, we're pleased to notify you that your annual comprehensive financial report for the financial area ending September 30th, 2022 qualifies for the GFOA certificate of achievement and for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the government and its management. And this isn't something that I do. This is her team. They work hard on this. You know, we all live in a four-season type environment. They live in two seasons. They live in a budget season and an audit season. And as soon as you're done with one, they go back into the other. But a lot of man-hours, a lot of people work to make this happen every year. And with that, I just want to recognize Mrs. Sherman and her team. And she's welcome to come and say a few words.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Thank you, Mayor, commissioners. As Mr. Vavrik just mentioned, this is the 39th consecutive year that the city has received this award. It is a lot of work putting to this and gathering that information, and you have to do it in accordance to their rules, and we were proficient in all areas. So Maritza Rodriguez is the finance and accounting manager. It is her and her team that does a lot of this work. And I'm so grateful that we were able to continue this legacy that the city has, and we plan to continue it going forward. Thank you.
All right, next up, fire department.
Well, I just want to clarify too, just real quick, this is just to, it's specific to how the financial statements are prepared. It's not the contents of the financial statements. It doesn't take an opinion on the financial health of our city.
Doesn't take an opinion, but it is the content.
Sure, okay.
It's definitely the content, and it's a lot of factors that are considered. I mean, sometimes if you have some major findings or major issues, you may not get the award. So it does consider a lot of factors.
Sure, okay, but again, but it's relied upon on what's provided to them. So it's not like they're taking deep dives in any of our...
It's audited financials, yes.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Chief?
Good, oh, good afternoon, Mayor, commissioners, members of the public. Sean Wyland, Fire Chief, Apokal Fire Department. Today I'm here to talk through and present some of our operational kind of updates as far as where we're at with, as a fire department. Kind of explain some of the metrics we track, why are they important to us as an ISO-1 department, and how we compare it to some of our surrounding agencies. And some of this stuff we have discussed before. Starting with per capita, per capita are types of ratios that we look at, or how we compare our numbers versus the rest of the population in surrounding areas. Again, I've kind of talked through that through some of our budget presentations and things like that. We look at our per capita compared to region, national averages. And all this come, and the national average comes from the NFPA study on NFPM profiles. Again, it's an aggregate look at populations, density sizes, and things like that, and what we kind of look at. And here's the bar graph that kind of demonstrates where we sit as a, as a department compared to several other agencies in the area and the national average. So as you can see, and there's two different numbers for us because we do have our contract area as well. So this, this number, first number to the left, the 2.3 is our average with just our normal response area. With the contract area, that does dip down a little bit because we do have a larger area that we cover with, with the same number of people. Next statistic we like to look at is our call volume. You'll notice this is from September of last year to March 1st of this year. Six-month look at kind of our average call volume responses in our entire city. As you can see, Station 1 does have a large number of responses compared to the other stations that are out there. These are things that we look at when we're tracking some of our numbers. 1,891 compared to the next highest being 800 calls, calls for service. That's more than double. So that's something that's obviously a red flag for us. And something we kind of looked at and adjusted by adding a second ambulance to Station 1's area. If you remember, at the start of the fiscal year this year, we added a second unit, Ambulance 11. As a full-time, fully-staffed unit for us. Again, also things that we're looking at, as you can see, is we're starting to track Station 7 numbers. With the growth coming, and we know that there's going to be that growth out to the northwest, we want to make sure we're starting to track that, track that as well. So we spoke about per capita numbers. We've talked about call density, or what I call call density, which is call volume. But how do we look at these numbers, and how we show how they work together and demonstrate not just those numbers, but their effectiveness in our responses? So other things we have to look at, of course, response times. Again, there's that four-minute standard that's out there, not just for ISO, but for the American Heart Association. Are we getting the number of units on scene? So again, talk about their density. So we have a high number of firefighters. We're talking about the, the call volume or the area that we're responding to. So again, those two numbers come together, and again, how are we looking at? Are we making sure we're sending, not just have those numbers in place, but we're sending the right responses to those areas? One of the things we started doing earlier this year as well was looking at pro QA, or how we dispatch our units. Prior, in the prior years, and in fact, this is the first year we've actually implemented where we're sending multiple units to even an ambulance call, or an EMS call. In previous, in previous times, we would send only a single ambulance to that, to that response. What we've looked at and dissected in working with dispatches, how they're taking that call in. They start looking at the demographics. They start looking at what type of call they're responding to. Is it a simple diabetic? Is it a fall? Is it a code 90 where we're actually working CPR? All these things come into play, and we make sure we're responding to the right units and the right number of personnel to those types of calls. And again, we want to make sure that we not only meet, but we exceed the current guidelines, including AHA and ISO. Another big component, something that I'm going to dive in today, is unit hour utilization. So unit hour utilization is another benchmark or another metric that aids us in our decision-making. You know, we can use, there's a number of ways, or a number of ways how we look at unit hour utilization. You can use just transports. In other words, if we, if we looked at just our transports of our EMS calls, we can dissect that by the number of hours that unit's in service per week. And something we do is we actually take the average call volume for that week. So it's not just the transports themselves, but average call volume for those ambulances. Because that way, we're able to capture not only the utilization, but making sure we have adequate numbers of units on standby as well. So one of these things, what you see here is kind of the optimal numbers, which is 0.55 to 0.45%. Above-average numbers, which is 0.45 to 0.35. The standard for 911 system, 0.35 to 0.25, and this is all, again, percentage-based numbers. What, another way of looking at that is if we have a unit that's running in the 33.33 percentile, they're in a standard for a 911 system. They're, in other words, they're available 70% of the time to run other calls. Does that make sense? Okay, so when we're looking at that, again, another example, and this is our units broken down. So we have our average call volume per week. So Ambulance 1, for instance, 42.77 calls per week they run. We divide that by the 168 hours of a normal working week, 24-hour shifts, seven work weeks. Gives us our unit utilization. So we look at some of that, again, Ambulance 1 is in the 0.25 range, which we have a comparison. We'll bring up the graph here in a minute. Ambulance 11, 32.3 calls per week, so dividing that out is 0.19 for unit utilization. That's important because an example of that, before, again, we had a single unit at Station 1. So we had to combine those numbers of 42.77 calls and 32 calls per week, which gave us a lot higher number of responses for a single unit. That put us in about the 0.44 range of responses, which is a higher level of average, excuse me. And it's not ideal for a 911 system. So again, as we look at these numbers, the unit hour utilization on the left, and the call volume per week, and where our ambulance is sit, again, it kind of demonstrates where we're at and how we're operating. Again, understanding that these also, we have to compare not just to the unit hour utilization, but response times. That's another component we, we talked about before. All these factors we look at and compare and ensure that we're on the right path moving forward. We compare populations, square mileage, stations, engines, number of engines we have, towers, staffing, and other metrics compared to the surrounding departments. Again, this, this last slide that we have kind of shows a comparative study of all the departments in the area. Again, this was something that was a, was a regional project for the 23, 24 fiscal year. Through the Central Florida Fire Chiefs Association, we all got together, kind of put in our pieces and parts and our numbers to come up with a spreadsheet, so we could all kind of sit down and compare things together. And again, this, these are certain departments that actually participated, not all participated, but kind of gives us a number of where we're at compared to other departments. Luckily, we had some even from Claremont, Deland, Kissimmee, you know, a very wide variety of, of types of departments and where we're, and where we're at. Again, if you have any questions about that sheet or want any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for Chief?
Yes, I appreciate you bringing this for us. This is definitely helpful. What, on this graph that we're looking at here, this chart, we got a lot of cost per X. What's, what's that tells? Like, cost per firefighter, you're, we're taking into account cost for everything. I mean, it's, it's our staffing, it's our trucks, our maintenance, possibly new buildings, things like that. So what does that, I guess, how's it really tell us? What should we really be looking at to tell us the health or how we truly compare to others, other municipalities?
Well, as far as the, is the cost specifically? So again, that's just an aggregate way of looking at what it costs for our fire department to operate. And again, what it costs for other fire departments to operate. So they, again, basically, we take the total annual budget divided by, you know, the number of emergency calls, the total annual budget divided by number of firefighters, and then also per citizen. So that's just kind of the way that we can...
So, and ours is, obviously, the residents probably can't see this, but we're on the higher side of that. So to bring that cost down would be to hire more firefighters? Is that what this is indicating?
I mean, there's, there's, hire more firefighters.
I can, I can spread it on average, though, on, with more firefighters, their salaries aren't gonna...
Well, again, this is, again, this is an aggregate number of the entire budget.
If I do less firefighters, it's not going to change our annual budget by millions. So our cost per firefighter is going to go up because our annual budget may go down not much per firefighter. So I'm just trying to make sure I understand the numbers and, and how we truly compare it to other municipalities, and then what we can do to also make it as efficient as possible.
Sure, and, you know, kind of, so efficiency as far as that's concerned, so if, like, an example, if you look at our population, our square mileage compared to Kissimmee. Our city population's 58,000. Kissimmee gave the numbers of 89,000. Again, square mileage, 21 square miles versus our 35 square miles. But then when you look at the number of stations they have, they have four stations, we have six. You know, number of sworn personnel, things like that, and also the transports, you know. What I look at is the, when you look at, I think it's the annual EMS transports. Kissimmee's running 12,000 transports per year. We're running 5,000 transports per year. Again, so looking at what's more efficient and, and all those things that come into play, that's, that's everything we look at. It's an aggregate look, but again, the finances is a separate thing. That's simply budgets divided by, budgets divided by the emergency calls, and budgets divided by firefighters, and budgets divided by citizens.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my question is, what are you trying to tell us with this information? Because, again, we just went, we just had a workshop related to stuff that I think what the storyline that you're trying to convey here is more related to conversations that we had last week during the workshop. This would have been helpful then. Why now?
Well, we've done, we've done all these studies, I've done these, I've shown these before. It's nothing, why now? It's more just showing that we're up...
During budget workshops, or this is like a budget workshop, kind of a conversation. I'm just curious as to why we're having this conversation now.
Well, I'm giving an update as far as how we look operationally, you know, it's...
These, these aren't oper, well, these aren't really operational figures. These are more budget-driven figures, right? You're, you're, we're trying to tell a story here based off of our annual budget, but it's our annual budget as a percentage of our general fund budget. That's not on here. So is that in line or out of line with other municipalities? You know, putting the cost per emergency call, cost per firefighter, cost per citizen, you know, clearly, we're putting this on paper because we're a little bit higher than some of the other, other areas. What are we trying to say with that figure? Are you, are you trying to tell us that we're overspending in this department? Or are you saying that we're...
I don't, I think you're misunderstanding. This is not something, this is something the Central Florida Fire Chiefs came together, and we all did this as an aggregate study. It's not in this, not, I, I gave numbers that were for Apokal, not for, I don't know what Claremont does, I don't know what Deland does. These are, if I look at it...
Another point to be made is that we just got this today, so you're leaving me to my own devices to run numbers as I'm getting the data real time. So it's, it's kind of, kind of counterproductive to have a conversation like this when we're just seeing this data for the first time. So naturally, we're going to have questions like this.
Anybody else? Any questions for Chief?
And by the way, as a percentage, the 23,262,3112, I'm assuming is this year's budget, against our general fund budget of 85,462,535, or 534 that's in our, in our proposed budget that's online, that would make up 28% of the general fund budget. Whereas, you know, a lot of municipalities in the areas, their public safety spend is over 60% as a part of their general fund. According to our document, we're at 54% in our budget, so just wanted to put that out there.
We can get, we can get those, if those numbers are something, we'll try to pull those for you.
I just pulled them while we were talking. Those are factual.
Okay, I guess Chuck, you want to talk about the, or who is going to talk about the, the OSH, and then the...
I'll bring it up in the my report.
Oh, okay, 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 all right. Good enough. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief, appreciate it. All right, Mr. Nesta.
Absolutely. Just want to say thank you to the council to allow me this time to present on this. It's been something that's obviously been discussed, and a lot of public residents are, are concerned about this. And my, my presentation's going to be very concise, very short. Because what I, what I want to put this into perspective of is similar to going to the doctor's office. You feel something's wrong inside of you, you don't know what it is, but you tell the doctor, "Look, here's my pain points, it's for you to figure this out." And that's where we're at at this point, and these are my pain points, and these are the residents' pain points as well. And I'll go through each one, kind of give a brief synopsis of why I feel it needs to be reviewed. And then if there's any specific questions about it, let me know, I'm happy to have a little more dialogue. The first one is Camp Weewah. Every representative up here, except for myself, approved the purchase of Camp Weewah. There's a lot of questions that come into that. There's a grant that was provided that stipulated exactly how the camp should be used. We don't, I really haven't gotten whether or not we are using it in that capacity. There are certain requirements that we had to do that are costing us over a million dollars to get that million dollars, so it didn't make sense in that capacity. Multiple appraisals, things like that, so, and, and there's a lot of other just financials that don't make sense on that one. The, the reserves, obviously, I mean, I think that one was one that I, I've touched on since I've been elected of just the inconsistencies there, policies, procedures, things like that, that need to be reviewed. The opioid crisis payment, there, that was one that actually, right since I got elected, was, was occurring, and there was a lot of questions I had that went unanswered at that time as well. The City of Apopka bill payments, we've had some insurance issues, we've had some other, whether it's different departments that, that didn't have payments made on their behalf for equipment or things like that. It, just questioning why, how could that happen with, with the financial records that we do have? Employment expenses and reimbursements, there's, I've had a lot of questions on those, and, and just understanding exactly where are those reimbursements going? How are they being paid? We had a farmworkers association payment years back. It didn't seem like it actually went to our farmworkers association or our local farmworkers. So we need to figure out what happened to that. Where did that go? And, and it needs to be given to and provided to the, the people that that was meant to go to. Our property-owned, City of Apopka-owned property, our transactions, our real estate transactions, there's been multiple that I've seen that we've either undersold, tried to undersell, whatever it may be, and, and it's either we don't know the market or something's going on in the background. And, and some of these, again, it happened before I was elected, but it needs to be reviewed and made sure that policies, procedures, and, and process was taken care of there. Our grant money that we've received, and this is the last one for now, the, the grant money we've received, where's it gone to? Can we track exactly when it hit our account? Where did it go? Where did it go to? How was it spent? What was it spent? What accounts did it hit? Lot of variables there that, that didn't add up when I reviewed documents and had questions. For, again, for the two years that I've been here, there's been so many inconsistencies with these kind of hot eight items for me that I feel, and, and the residents feel, and that's who we work for, the residents. And if they don't feel comfortable with our financials, we need to make sure and get them comfortable with our financials, and this is the only way to do it properly. So that's it, that's my presentation. It's, it's concise, and again, it's, it's not about exactly what is the issue. It's, I need the doctor to come in and tell me what's the issue and how do we fix it.
Anybody got a question?
No, other than, you know, I have been following some of them, some of the funds. The last time I did get something from our CFO, which, I believe, that was March fourteenth of twenty-twenty-three. I just feel like, I mean, I, I kind of have a running tab of where some of that money went, and not too sure if we even spent the funds where they were allocated to completely. I just know some of the big-ticketed items that we did spend. But I will just say, if we have any, are we working on any grants right now?
We're always working on grants.
So is there a way of, when we are working on grants that are going to require that we, as the city, share in that expense, that those grants come before us or at least make us aware that we are applying for these grants? Is there any way that that can occur?
Sure. Um, all, I mean, almost all grants are fifty-fifty matched. We've got a couple that maybe have no match, but almost, when you say Blanche, not even...
The major ones are fifty.
Yeah, they're fifty-fifty matches, so, yeah.
And, and do we have grants that were awarded? And we have not, and we're not aware of it, it hasn't been brought to us?
Yes.
And...
Well, yes, and we can put together, I can, most of those would be through DO's office, through, through Public Works. I mean, the grants would be in his department, but, yeah, we could put together a whole list of those, the grants that are still outstanding. So the grants out there, it's, it's, it's state or federal money sitting out here waiting for us to, typically, it's reimbursement for that project to come, to get completed. They don't give us the money upfront and expect us to get it done. It's always, most of them are reimbursements after the fact, not before.
Most of, most of the grants are reimbursement-type grants. You don't spend the money first, except for our ARP funds.
Yeah.
We did get that, the COVID funds. We did get those funds in advance. And we do have grant status update meetings with the project managers once a month, and we are compiling like a grant status report that you have asked for.
Right.
But I want to make sure it's current information. So that is being worked on. I had one draft, but then by the time I got it, it was not, no longer current. So we are compiling that information, we'll let you know all of the grants that the city, that the city is either applying for, already have, or, you know, thinking about applying for.
Right, because I have here, I still have the Duke Energy money that we had gotten. We have the American Rescue Act.
Duke Energy money was not a grant, that was just money that they...
It was, I know, it was, it was because when they, from what I understand, it was...
They underbilled.
Yeah, it was money situated in the reserves, and you got the status on that.
And we're, are we done with all of the money from Duke Energy?
No, ma'am. No, we're not.
I mean, it's, it's all come in.
We have the money, but we haven't spent all the money.
Yes, correct.
Because we had, when it originally came in, there was a list that the late Ed Bass had provided to us as to where that money was going to be allocated to.
And that's on the schedule that I gave you.
And that's still on the schedule?
Yes, ma'am.
Because, right, because when I... Let me see, the Duke Energy...
While she's looking for that, how do you treat that money within your accounting systems?
It sits in the reserves as a restricted part of the reserves, or the assigned part of reserves.
How did we allocate the Duke money?
That's what he just asked, and that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay, was that? What was the other one? This one I had, the disaster relief CDBG two-point-seven, I mean, oh, that was a...
Sidewalks? Or is that the house?
It said disaster relief.
That was the disaster relief.
What, okay, we have like three CDBG grants going on. Phase one sidewalk, phase two sidewalk for CRA, as well as for the affordable housing. So those three.
So that one, I just, again, these are all from twenty-twenty-three. And I, I do remember I had asked for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, I guess, what we're asking for is to have, whether it's a monthly or quarterly, however, just an update on the grants that we have outstanding, the grants that have been awarded. Has any of that been expended toward whatever we had allocated to?
Well, that would always come forward as a, you know, when, when they come to, to spend the money, we would, we would come to city council for, with that.
Yeah, if it's over fifty K, like, say, for instance, with the sidewalks, whenever we had to award that contract to the vendor, of course, it had to come before council for approval because it exceeded the, the fifty thousand dollar threshold. So the projects themselves is what is coming forward to council when you get ready to spend those funds that are related to those grants.
And a part of that would be, hey, we've got the, this is the grant, here's what we have to do.
And we try to identify that funding source in that, in that item, is what the mayor is referring to.
I want to kind of bring this all back around, too, is that, that's the point that I want this in the forensic audit, is that there's a lot of questions behind it. And grants that we have received or that we, that were coming in, we're told at one point or the other that it's going to be X millions, and somehow it got dropped down to five figures. So there's a lot of discrepancies there, and that...
Which one was that?
There's been a couple of those, that, right as soon as I got elected, we had some grants coming in, maybe, maybe it was COVID funds, maybe it was, um...
No.
Yeah, I'm telling you, yes, that did happen. So that did happen. Our past administrator did say it was going to be millions coming in, and we got the short change of that in some capacity.
That was the seven million from the arrest...
We got, we got short change by the federal government. You're absolutely right. We should have, Okowi, who has fewer people...
That's my point, though.
That's got nothing to do with us, that's the federal government, that's your Congress, that's not the City of Apopka.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. So yes, the City of Okowi got twenty-one million dollars with, with forty-eight thousand. Because we hit the fifty thousand threshold, it put us into a different category, which reduced our payment from what should have been twenty-three to twenty-five million down to seven. So I reached out to all our congressional delegation, Marco Rubio, Rick Scott, Dan Webster, who else, Demings, and said, "How did we get this far out?" Well, it's just that narrow window of cities that were between fifty and seventy-five thousand got completely screwed in the whole deal. Even if you compared us to Orlando, we didn't get the money. Orlando got more per citizen than we did. So we absolutely got, got, yeah, got hosed on that deal. But that's a federal government that was trying to get money into the economy fast, and we just got left out.
Did we ever get, whoa, where did she go? The pharmaceutical settlement, did we ever get that? Because I have notes on that also.
Is that opioid...
Uh, yeah.
We recently got some money.
Some, but here's what...
Very little.
Yeah, I know, it was, for some reason, I have forty-eight K, forty-eight thousand.
I don't know if it was that much, but we recently got some, and I did set it aside in a, in a deposit account.
We, I think we got four, I think, four different settlements.
Yeah, it was, yeah, we got one for seven thousand. And one, one was for seven thousand twenty-one eighteen cents, one was for four thousand seven hundred and five, one was for like six hundred and ninety-eight.
Very, yeah, very little.
And there was like a whole bunch of different amounts.
Different companies.
And it added up to twenty-seven thousand.
Could, that sounds a lot better than the forty-something, yeah. I do have a list of that, I can share it with you. But it was set aside in a restricted, in a deposit account, so until it could be utilized.
Believe it or not, this is from twenty-twenty-three. I have, where has the monies been earmarked to?
We just got the money.
Oh, you just got this?
We did within the, yes, since I've been here. We just got those funds not too long ago.
Okay.
So, and again, I set it aside in a deposit account to be used because there's restrictions on how it could be used, as I understand for the information. I went back and where Michael had spelled it out during a council meeting before, Michael Rodriguez.
Okay.
Okay. So we, we, since I've been here, that was when those funds came in.
All right, any other questions? All right.
No questions necessarily, I mean, just provide thoughts on the matter, but, um, no, like I said in the last meeting, related to the reserves especially, you know, the reserves always typically get a whole bunch of eyes on it. It's talked about a whole bunch. And, you know, when we, when we talk about the Duke monies, like Commissioner Velasco's just brought up, and that's been in the, in the public's realm here quite often lately as it relates to the homeless venture that is being discussed. And to say that it's sitting in reserves yet, some people verbalize that they don't know where that money went, that gives me pause. The, the anecdote that I used the last meeting related to our budget workshops, you know, and Ms. Sherman and I have talked about this at the last meeting, but there was dialogue that it wasn't immediate, immediately clear what was in the enterprise reserve balance and what was the status of that. I look at this, the CAFRA that we have in front of us today, and on page eighty-nine, where it talks about the progression of our unassigned general reserve balance, you know, it goes from fifteen point six-eight million in twenty-one to twenty-four point nine-six million in twenty-two, almost a ten million dollar jump, but yet it's, it's clunky storylines that, oh, we, we don't have any money, but yet our, our general fund jumps by ten million bucks year over year. So that, that, that in and of itself, I say green light for sure, forensic inspection of our reserves, just as a healthy course of inspection. Some of these other ones, again, and I want to go back to the comment that was made. Yeah, we have audits, but these audits are general audits. They're not necessarily meant to go necessarily too deep on any one area. It's more about, hey, are the, the top-line management controls and process, are you generally doing the entry and, and reconciliation and overview and checks and balances that you should be as an organization? But yet, are we really testing the controls if you go deep on any one of these eight points of categories? It'd be one thing if staff could stand up and say, from a Camp Weewah perspective, we are full, fully accounted for it, it's done, dusted, all the money that should have transactioned on that, that, that project is complete? And if that's the case, okay, maybe we can check that one off and say, okay, here's the full accounting from a grant perspective, matching funds, our accountability for it to say, yes, we have fully satisfied the state's favor as it relates to the monies that they gave to us for that project. That'd be one thing, but again, it is a, it's a very big purchase, a five million dollar purchase, that we want to make sure that we've done all the right things.
I think the only thing we've got left on Weewah is the sewer conversion. We're, we're in the process now of finishing up the water. Water's now, and sewer will be...
Yeah, but the sewer isn't that related, it's just a water...
Well, it's, it's, right, yeah, 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 yeah.
So now from the American Rescue Act, we had, we had allocated two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for Camp Weewah, septic to sewer.
Right, that was a, the sewer is a separate grant running that program, currently pending, I'm sorry, Radley Williams, Parks Recreation Director. The current item's pending on the Camp Weewah land and water grant for the purchase of the property. We're, we've got potable water being installed currently on property. We have ADA restroom renovations that are, we have plans on, we're working on getting those constructed. And I believe those are the last two items hanging on that, to go, to close that grant requirement out.
Well, let me say this, too. The, the goal of this presentation is not to take a deep dive in every single one and really just rebut it and go through it, that's not the goal of this. There's clearly questions that we've had, and this is not specific to you, sorry, of these, and, and residents have said there's questions here. So I appreciate the conversation of different grants, things like that, but I think that's the point, the fact that you have so many questions unanswered and, and things like that of what's going on, just goes back to the point that this is needed, and need to be greenlit, we need to put a timeline to an RFP, and move this forward and, and keep it moving. The residents have asked for it, let's give it to them, keep it moving. It doesn't need to be this big political thing, just keep it moving.
I, I think naturally going deep on some of these things is, is normal course, so I would, I would, I would agree. And I would, again, from my own personal prioritization, I would prioritize number two first. And then number seven, eight, and four. So I'm not, I don't have any familiarity with number six. Three is kind of, you're not gonna, if what we're talking about is twenty-seven or forty-eight thousand, even if you double it, that's not worth the time and energy, I don't think, if, if we're trying to prioritize some of these other things.
So I'll have, Blanche, if you kind of work with the commissioner on, on a little more granular detail on the scope.
Well, this is as granular as I kind of plan on getting with this. So what I'd like to do is just get an official approval, and if I need to make a motion, I'll do that right now, to start the RFP process and, and get this going. We can work on exactly what that looks like, but these aren't getting more granular than this. This needs to be looked at in a larger swath. You guys said we don't want the whole city, we don't want everything to be looked at. Okay, no problem. Here they are. So I move that we do a RFP for forensic audit for these eight items with the prioritization of number two, number seven, eight, and four.
So I, I just want to clarify forensic. Because forensic is, I mean, from my point of view, forensic is when we're looking for something that may be criminal. Is, is that an intent yet?
It doesn't necessarily need to be criminal, it can be that misappropriation of funds, it could be an accident, it could be we didn't follow policy, maybe there's not a policy. It just shows us, it creates an even deeper layer of transparency for our residents.
Okay.
And that's the goal.
Like I said, I mean, a forensic... Like I said, I mean, a forensic would be more, you know, whereas your normal audit would say, hey, if money's flowing between a couple of accounts within the city, generally speaking, are the right people moving that money? Are the right people looking at it? Are the right people approving it, et cetera, on a general perspective? Whereas maybe a forensic audit would say, okay, on the, number two, like for the reserves. Give me all evidence that this appropriation of this money flow was approved by council, what date, what time, who made the money movement? If it was meant for one purpose, did it go for that purpose, et cetera? So. And again, I don't think it, I think this is kind of like salary studies and all these other things that are, you want to do this as an organization just to make sure that everybody feels safe. And that's, including the people that are doing it on a day-to-day basis, say, nothing says validation to say, hey, someone's really looked at the covers, looked behind the curtain and said, yeah, you guys are doing it right. But there's enough pause, I think, with what Commissioner Nesta has verbalized and, you know, just general top track of some of the, the way that these meetings go where it kind of says, okay, it's probably worth taking a look at.
Okay.
So I would second the motion.
Okay, you got a motion by Commissioner Nesta, second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Public comments.
Nikki McGuire. Nikki McGuire, Naomi Kids, good evening, Mayor Commissioners and everyone in the rightful place. I am here to officially invite everyone to our Community Family Fund Day. It's free admission and free parking on May 11, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM at Edwards Field next to Kithlin Nelson Park. Free to you means someone else paid the price. So I am begging you to please, please, please come out to show your support. Thank you to Sergeant Wiggins for assisting us in getting bicycles and helmets to give away. He has been a very strong supporter and mentor for the last 10 years to Naomi Kids. Now, let the fun begin. Which chief will be dunked the most? Ready? Chief McKinley has been Team Naomi since 2017. The evidence was captured right here by the Popka Voice. The fire department under the leadership of the previous chief has welcomed us to Station One since 2016. Thank you, Chief Wylem and Captain Holderfield for continuing to make our visits possible and helping us secure some well-needed lockers. Please come out and thank them by giving them a cold dunk on a hot day. Now, this is not the opportunity to come out and to show any hatred to either one of the chiefs, but it's an opportunity to bring the community together. So we're all about love on that day. Snowy will be present with unbeatable tasty shaved ice. And we cannot have snowy without popcorn and cotton candy made by Fun Sun Party Rentals. We will also have this year for the first time, Matson Magic will be putting on a magical show. Do you trust your eyes or do you trust your mind? Live musical performance by Elizmo and DJ Glenn pumping the tunes. Follow us on facebook.com/NaomiKidsInc for more updates. We will also have a free kids zone and we invite you to check out all the local vendors and we will reward you. Please contact us with any questions. Have a great day and see you on May 11th. Now, I want to use the rest of my time, it's, and I apologize, I'm going to get a little emotional, to thank Commissioner Becker. I know you have two meetings left. So on behalf of Naomi Kids, I would like to thank you for believing in our team. Many years ago, we approached Commissioner Becker for a donation from his discretionary fund. Unfortunately, by the time we approached him, the money had already ran out because commissioners up there do a lot. He personally believed in us and what we were doing for the community and made a donation from his personal family account. So we greatly appreciate you and we know that wherever you go, you are going to continue to be a great leader. So we thank you for all that you have done and we wish you the best as you move away from Apopka.
Thank you.
Sylvester Hall.
Good afternoon, Sylvester Hall. 391 Rowland Hills, L.A., Apopka, Florida. Mayor Commissioners, I'm here as a constant reminder. They always, they always used to say in the military, when crisis hit, you just go back to the basics, go back to the basics. So that's why I bring you guys this. When you look at what is happening in our country, in the city of Apopka and the state of Florida, I always say, too many good people standing by watching bad things happen and not doing anything about it. Now, I didn't use nice people because nice people go along to get along. It's too many good people. Good people are supposed to stand up and say, hey, look, this is wrong. We need to, we need not do that. The world would not be destroyed by, you know, evil people. It's just the good people standing by doing anything, just watching it, knowing it's wrong, but too afraid to stand up and say anything about it. You hear me say this phrase all the time, we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth. Sometimes we don't want to hear the truth. I want to bring one thing up. When we did the debates, I went to a lot of them, reviewed a lot of them, none of these values was brought up. We talked about everything else. Until we started electing officials and our first responder based on these values, we're going to always have the problem that we have in our city, our state, and our country. Just imagine as we operated like this in the city of Apopka, where we use principles, where integrity matters, honesty matters. Just think about some of the things that we're going through now. If we just simply been honest about things, how much would change? How much money we would save the city? Accountability. When you have no accountability, the same action is going to be repeated, whether it's your children or whether it's your organization or anything in life. If there's no accountability, you're going to have that repeat process. Responsibility. We all are responsible for, well, you all are responsible for running the city of Apopka. And I hope you take that as personally as you take running your household, because that's what you're actually doing. The citizens select you to make their life safe, a place where they can go and they can thrive. And that's your responsibility. Now, the last election, we only had about 12% of the people come out. Well, if you're a good leader and you was chosen to lead and your heart was there to lead, that would be a problem to you. It would be a concern to me that I only have 12% of the people coming out and voting. That means I don't have my city engaged in what's going on in the city. And that should be a problem if you're a good leader. Morals. We teach our kids simple morals. That's our foundation, simple morals. But when it comes to us as adults, what do we show them? Your character. People will, you can say anything, people are not going to remember that. But what you do to people, that's what they're going to remember. Saying is one thing, but doing is another. Ethics. Look at where we just got out of meeting. If we had have provided by ethics, we wouldn't have that little shade room yet. Probably wouldn't have happened. Probably would have saved that money. Just simple operating by ethics. Procedures, the same thing. Leadership. I want everybody to understand that the reason why we don't have a training facility at the police department, the reason why we don't have a contract with the firefighters, the reason we don't have a forensic audit, it's, it's because of one person's leadership. That's the mayor. If the mayor wanted all these things to happen, the homeless, that's the mayor. If he wanted them to happen, they would have been there and it would have been done overnight. And these are the things that we have the resources for.
Dennis New.
Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street. I've been sorry for my absences, but I've been busy. First thing I want to cover real quick is rumor has it, they want to have a new contract with the guys at the VFW over this city-owned building. We're going to go up on their rent or change their conditions and stuff. My question is, we own the Chamber Building. Are we going up on their rent or are we showing them favoritism because they've become a political action group for the mayor and his banker lackeys? That's all I'm going to say about that one. Now, since the first election that this mayor was elected in, I've had a question rolling around in my head and that was about money. I heard the mistruth of the reserves are gone. Well, I put some common sense to it. If the reserves are gone, where did all the money come from that we put in to his banker buddy's bank at little no interest, costing the city taxpayers, what? Hundreds of thousands of dollars in interest. That's the cost. We had to foot the bill from it. You just came out of a meeting where the citizens and the taxpayers are going to have to foot the bill. I think I can feel comfortable speaking for all the citizens when I say, they want to know where their money has gone. Now, some months ago, a person that's in a member of my group did a public information request for the checks from Camp Weewah. And we got a stack of checks from Camp Weewah. And I went through them and I found a handful of them written from the city of Apopka to the city of Apopka. They totaled $395,537.06. Several months ago, I put in an information request wanting to know about the invoices, the contracts, what this money was used for. And I've been met with delay after delay after delay. Yesterday, I got a response, 29 pages of information I didn't ask for, a whole bunch of new checks that gave me more stuff to go through, but no answers that I asked for on these checks. And the request was specific. So once again, as a taxpayer, I want to know where the money's gone. Where'd the money from the grant they gave for Fire Station Six? Where's it been stored or did we get it yet? When you say we get a grant, that means we got the grant. If you say we got a grant and the money is pending completion of the project, that's a different perspective to the taxpayers. When you tell me you got something, that means you got a buck in your pocket, not a buck waiting in the wings. And people want to know, not just me, a lot of people in this city want to know, why did we lose money on interest in the bank? Was that money for Fire Station Six given to us? How much money are the taxpayers on the hook for, for the apartment complex that was supposedly not known about and then known about? And finally, the money that was slated for the homeless. That was a refund from Duke Energy. It was slated for the homeless by the mayor, who also happened to be a member of the group that was going to get the money. He was on the LLC and the board. That's a direct conflict of interest. Why weren't any of the other groups considered? Where's the money gone? Is it blatant mismanagement or conspiracy for corruption? I ask you, the citizens of Apopka should be concerned. We're going to put these retirees on the street, yet we let his political action group run freely from a building also owned by the city. It's time for it to stop.
Albert McKimmy.
Albert McKimmy, 3603 Golden Gem Road. Dennis came up here and he's already went over quite a lot of the points that I had today, so there's no point in, in going over them again. We also are looking for some more information and public requests. Primarily, we're interested in funds and where they went in terms of nonprofits. As Dennis had said, the mayor is also involved in a nonprofit, which as far as we're concerned, he has misused city resources for in terms of providing the city clerk, city facilities, city facilities to look at meetings there. So we would appreciate if we could get the records information that we've been requesting. Commissioners, we love the job that you do. You're present when passing ordinances. You're present at groundbreaking. You're present at ribbon cutting. The only thing I would like to see is a little bit more presence in the interim period. There are things happening in the city of Apopka with developers and contractors that to my mind are contradictory to the common good of the, the residents. We recently have a development called Wild Oaks, which is a flagship development. And it's broken ground. There is approximately 300 acres out there just now. And when I drove down Golden Gem Road the other day, when the wind's blowing, we have 40-foot dust clouds rising into the air. 300 acres stripped of all topsoil. 300 acres producing sand blown directly onto residents in a new housing estate directly opposite. City of Apopka are responsible for policing that development. They have bonds to ensure that things are carried out in the manner they require to be carried out in. For over four years, I've fought and requested DEP and City of Apopka to hold these developers accountable. If you were to go to that site today, there's not a single water truck on that site. There's no way they can irrigate that property. My eye today has got dust from concrete from the one next door to me. Again, breaking concrete, using a, a, a machine to break it up to put it in, in dumps. The city holds bonds, the city holds these people accountable. This is unacceptable that they're, that, that we are allowing them to, to, to do what they want to do as developers. These developers are getting priority from the city in terms of policing as well. The development next door to me, I can count dozens of police cars every night patrolling that site because there's been break-ins, there's been equipment stolen, there's been building materials stolen. But what I'm asking is, if those houses haven't yet been handed over to the public, they still belong to the developers. Isn't it the case that the developer should be providing security for the materials that's on site? If the developers don't want to provide private security, then should the city be asking that they contribute to the policing of what is potentially a business? Residents shouldn't be paying the expenses of businesses. There's no security guards there. The only security guard you have at Parkview Preserve is on a Sunday between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM. And the reason they're there is because we complained that contractors were working during that times and it was, it was prohibited. That's the only time that they're there. It's time that these developers were held accountable and you ladies and gentlemen are the people who need to do it.
Douglas Anderson.
Andy Anderson.
Yeah.
There's an A in there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, good rainy afternoon to everybody.
Well, good rainy afternoon to everybody. Thank you, Mayor, councilpeople, and all of you that have spoken for us so far. We appreciate it. I'd like to draw your attention to what Bob, our quartermaster, is holding up. This is the groundbreaking shovel that was used when the building was built for the VFW. On it, it states groundbreaking, Apopka, Altamont Springs, post 10147. It's signed, or it was made by Mayor Land, Artie Vecchio, the president, the commander at that time, and Richard Anderson, who happened to be the city administrator at that time. I'd like to say in response to some of the things that have been said about the VFW and where we're going from here. Back when this was built, it was a handshake between Mayor Land and Artie Vecchio. It was not a written commitment, okay? Back then, handshakes were what people recognized you as, as honest, decent people. I understand where you're coming from. I like where you're coming from. I'm going to adjust to what you say, and we're going to live it out. Mayor Land lost the election to Mayor Kilchheimer. And Mayor Kilchheimer did not agree with what Mayor Land said. So he turned around and he said, listen, you guys have been living here, that's nice. Now we're going to charge you. We want to have 60% of the income that you're making off of the contracts, the rental contracts, will be to the VFW, and 40% will go to the city. There's nothing we can do about that. So we said, okay, that's what we'll admit to. Unfortunately, when Mayor Nelson, excuse me, when Mayor Nelson was elected, one year after he was elected, he reversed it. He said, no, it's 60% for the city and 40% for the VFW. Their proposed contract that they're looking at for us to sign, which we have not signed yet, is 0% for the VFW, 100% for the city. Their other proposal is, we will pay you $15 an hour for the use of the tables and chairs, and $15 an hour for the kitchen. This, they, in the last meeting that we had with the city personnel that met with us, they also stated that the city plans on replacing the chairs and the stove. Now, what does that cut us down to? Zero. Because you can't pay $7 for a table and only $7 to use the kitchen. So we're looking at almost nothing for income, okay? What we're looking for is that the contract that I signed with Mayor Nelson was a 10-year contract. We would like to propose that we go back to this contract, which we are presently under, for another six years, because it was a 10-year contract. And we continue to bring in the 40% for the VFW, and we will still allow the city to have the 60%. We would like to go back to making the contracts between the, between who rents the building and the VFW, okay? And then we would like to continue that for the next six years, which would be the full 10 years on the contract. Thank you.
That's under the consent agenda item. What we probably should have stopped you there. That's okay. We're good.
Well, that's his only opportunity to speak if it's on consent agenda, which I...
Right. It should be taken off consent.
Well, I don't know why it was on consent agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, consent agenda items are, on its surface, defined as those that are non-controversial. I mean, clearly, there was going to be controversy with this decision on the get-go. We've had multiple people from the VFW speak on this matter. So the fact that it's on the consent agenda is pretty perplexing.
Okay, so let's go to the consent agenda unless somebody, anybody else?
I have a couple others.
Uh-huh.
I have others.
Okay, VFW members?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Rod Olson.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane in Apopka. Mayor, commissioners, again, thank you for all you do for the city. Two items today. First, I want to start off with the Northwest Recreational Complex Fields. Building two fields, new fields that are multipurpose for fields. Two per year over the next three years. It's paramount to put in a Band-Aid on our two-year bleed. We've got issues right now with the condition of the fields, although they're improving mildly. We have continued use. We have continued growth of the programs, all the athletic programs. And we have continued growth in populations. The demand's only going to get more. By moving now and moving money and developing eight to 10 fields now, you will save us taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars and probably into millions of dollars spread over the next few years. Utilization must also be addressed. We've got men's league playing all day long. 160 to 200-pound players tearing up the same field hour after hour, many times both days in the week on the same field. Those fields don't survive that way. Cleaning up my office, I came across a few things. One of the things I came across is what I tried to do in management now and then is catch people doing things right. So often, it's easy to focus on what's wrong, what people aren't doing, rather than what they are doing. So I'm going to dedicate the next few items to that. First, Orange Blossom Jazz Festival. I happened to trip across it. It was last Friday. Thank you to Jeremy Langford and the entire band boosters for putting in that program. Brought together 18 jazz bands, junior high school, high school. They had training involved. They had commentators that would address and work with people and develop the program for the kids. It was finished off, and my wife and I made a point when we found out about going over to it, but the USFC and the Northern Florida jazz bands came out. It was an unbelievable event. Saturday Night Sounds, again, Bluestone Circle. Last Saturday was awesome. They always do a great job. And look forward to Absolute Def Leppard coming up. And that's this Saturday, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the amphitheater. It's a wonderful event. Speaking of the amphitheater, Radley, I've been most critical of you and your department, and kudos. I flagged Radley, I guess it was about a month ago, on the lights around the amphitheater, the knee-high ones around it. They were, I think only about three were operational. All 12 are now operational. They're cleaned up and fine, so thank you and your team for doing that. Public services. I had a water pressure issue about a month ago. I called and they said, well, we'll have someone over in the hour. And I'm like, yeah, right, okay, that'll happen. Sure enough, within an hour, Austin shows up at the doorstep, show me what he done, what he checked, determined the issue was on our side of the line rather than his, but he took the time to explain and walk me through it, so thank you. Also, public services. On Friday afternoon, I made a call in and reported a pothole that was on Firehouse Lane and Jason Dwelly. Went out to dinner, came back. That same night, that pothole was repaired. I know the response, time can't always be there, but by golly, it was awesome. Earlier today, I was frustrated by trying to work with C Click Fix. At times, I've gotten in there real easy, other times not. Wasn't so today. So I called into public services. Ms. April answered, awesome response. Apologized for any problems I had and identified a couple other potholes. So these types of things, I'm going to try to make it a forward, looking forward to saying, look, let's catch some people doing things right. We need to fix a lot of things in the city. We need to fix a lot of things in this country. And while we're on that topic, the fact that we're doing anything with the VFW hurts. The ability for us to see, for me to be up here and speak today is on the blood of our veterans. Thank you.
Edmund Poirier.
Howdy, folks. How are you? Listen, these are reading glasses, so that's why I'm putting them on. My name is Edmund Poirier. I live at 1598 Belmont Lane. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. I live at 21 Reverend Groton's, Helmsford, Mass. I had that address in my head. First of all, I want to talk about Austin Duran. This young man died 628 days ago. As of today, nobody has been held accountable for the negligent and preventable death of Austin Duran. I'd also like to mention my wife, Sheila Poirier. For the people behind me, I have my Apopka Cancer Cases shirt on. Sheila died on 7/6/2015, 3,194 days ago. There is not a day that goes by that I don't think about my wife, that I don't continue to search for answers, and I don't continue to fight for her to do the right thing. And that's why I've done a lot of things. The last time I was here and spoke, the city was fined $34,000 by the DEP for violating DEP regulations. Here we are, two years later. We're not any closer today to having the water in Apopka any safer today than it was when my wife died in 2015. And the reason is this. If just one home on one street has a bad backflow preventer, that backflow preventer can contaminate the whole neighborhood. And that brings me to a gentleman by the name of Jorge Garcia. This guy's in charge of the backflows, okay? This guy just got a $13,000 raise. And my sources are telling me that his evaluations have not been very good. Yet, the city was fined $34,000 underneath this guy, and we're supposed to fix this problem. And here we are, two years later. And we've read the letter, Diane, you saw Commissioner Philaskakis. You know, I saw the letter that was sent. And basically, what they're saying is the same thing. Well, it's still not done yet. This is important, okay? We can debate the numbers on how many people died, but a lot of people have died. And when you have the cities not following DEP regulations, yet they're saying all of our water meets DEP regulations when it doesn't, that's a problem, okay? We talked about next step earlier. They're not in compliance, and Nelson is on the board, and they're not in compliance. They're not even a nonprofit anymore, is my understanding, after speaking to some people in the back here. You have a couple of big trucks that are down, okay? They pick up the bulk. I'm getting complaints from people. For those of you who don't know, I run a Facebook page, Apopka Moles and Apopka Cancer Cases, okay? I'm getting complaints from people. And now I'm being told that, well, there's two trucks down, and because the two trucks are down, that's delayed everything. I have an idea. How about if we rent a truck to try to get caught up in this stuff? And try to cover everything. I'm going to go into this here. A precedent was set many years ago when Bill Aerosmith, the former commissioner, wanted to run for commissioner, okay? And he was allowed to run. But John Land, Uncle John, Brian Nelson's uncle, okay? He requested that Orange County make a rule on that because his position was Bill hadn't been living in the city long enough. He at least went and got a declaratory judgment. They let him rule on that. Why is it that Nadia Anderson, who was just elected commissioner, how could she, on May 30 of 2023, in a court injunction, swear under oath that she lives at 2920 Falcon Hill Drive, but yet on December 7th, she tells Susan Bone in a sworn affidavit that she moved into 1598 Belmont Lane on February 22nd, 2023? Both things can't be true, folks. They can't be true. Last I want to say...
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Give me 30 seconds. I'm coming from... Congratulations, Commissioner Becker. The best thing I ever did is when I left the city and moved on up to Boston. I flew down here. You couldn't give me an extra 20 seconds? You just show who you are. Thank you.
Bobby Boy.
Good day to all. I'm Bobby Boy.
Close the mic.
Right over in front of the mic.
Okay. It's when somebody was on it, it kept making a lot of beep noises. Okay, all right. Thank you. Bobby Boy, 2317 Boy Scout Road in Apopka. Going back to Sylvester's, people doing nothing. The flood insurance is what I'm trying to get on to. I am being forced to take flood insurance, which I am 14 to 17 feet above the water and 800 foot away from it. My neighbor is five or six feet lower and does not have to have flood insurance. She's not in the flood plain, and I am. And citizens is no longer, as of tomorrow, they will no longer cover me. And I finally found a surveyor that'll come out to a flood elevation for $500. But I don't know who else is being bothered by this, being forced to take flood insurance when you're not in a flood zone. I understand that by 2027, that the total state of Florida will be a flood zone. The little house I have is under 700 square foot. I'm paying $1,800 a year for insurance, and I add another $1,000 on it for a flood that I don't need. I have no mortgage on the place. I shouldn't be being demanded to have flood insurance. Across the street, all that has been stripped off, Bronson's, Orange Grove and stuff. And it's quite a bit higher than me, probably 12 foot higher. And I've been assured by Danny, the project manager, that that water would not be impacting anything on the north side of Boy Scout Road, that it's been engineered. And I've, there's been bad engineering from probably day one on some things, but I don't know how about this is going to go. But he said, lately, he's said that this will be, he'll put it, connect it to where he's told to, which is fine. But I think that's going to be at a culvert that's right across from the drain that goes down to the flood zone at the back of our properties. But that was filled in, and it's not going to go there. So I'm not sure how, what kind of flooding we're going to, from that. It's just supposition right now. I said, I'm 14 to 17 feet above my pond level. And when Dean came out the other day, we were out the road, he looked down to the pond, which is 1,000 foot away, and he says, this can't go in the flood zone. It's, it had to be Noah's Ark flood. I also understand I'm hard to get insurance because now they're not having insurance companies because of Donna, Ian, and Nicole flooding things. Everybody got their money all those years, and they had an expense. And now they all pulled out. We're left with citizens. Citizens and a few other companies will not. In fact, most of the other small companies will not insure a house built before 1985. We were built on 1985 and before that. The, so I'm losing the coverage anyway. I finally found a surveyor that would do a flood cert, but it'll take one to two weeks for him to get out there, which will be past my expiration date on the insurance itself. I don't know what's going to go on the end cap of Boy Scout Road and Benyon there. They talk about being commercial. Anyway, I'm also thinking that across the street will not be in a flood zone because it's going to be so much higher. But they're going to put the whole state in flood zone by 2027. And it just seems so ridiculous. And here again, as like Sylvester says, people doing nothing about it. And so here I am. I'm wondering if they're going to, where they're going to put the roundabout for the 429 Benyon, and also if they're still going to reroute Boy Scout Road in that little part of Boy Scout Lane. I made a, got my neighbors to sign on that. They liked the lane, and I talked to Alaska, and she said that she liked it. And I think Nick Nesta also said that they liked the name too.
Well, just so you know, we got our city engineers in the house.
Yeah, he's helped me too.
We do get a discount because of his hard work on flood insurance. So flood insurance is cheaper because of the work that Richard Earp has done for the city, so just so you know.
You're talking about a little house, 700 square foot, and I'm paying $2,500 in insurance a year.
It's tough out there in the insurance market. Yes, ma'am. All right. Thank you. That's it? Okay. All right. So here we are, back to consent agenda. So it looks like we want to pull the first number one off the consent agenda. So look for a motion to approve two, three, and, two and three.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor? All right. All opposed. Motion carries now. Sleep. All right. Bradley authorized the execution of the recreational facilities use agreement with veterans of foreign wars post 10117.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioners, Bradley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. Apologize. On Friday, when I spoke with Commander Anderson, he indicated he was ready to bring this to council. So we put on the agenda to bring to council for discussion. So we're here today. We've had many meetings with the VFW leadership, Mr. Babrick and myself, over the last six to eight months, discussing some rental challenges, some issues, some things coming up in the operation, and specifically the agreement that's currently in place, the management agreement, and a possible change to a facility use agreement. So that's what we have in front of you today. Little history, and I know Commander Anderson went through this in his comments earlier. The Apopka Community Center opened in 2005 with VFW using and operating the facility entirely. There was no written agreement in place at that time. In 2015, a management agreement was put in place outlining the VFW's role and establishing a rental revenue share between the VFW and city. And as mentioned, that was a 60/40 split. In 2020, the management agreement was updated and adjusted that rental revenue share between the city and VFW to 40/60. This proposed recreational facility use agreement would provide the following for the VFW. They would continue to get to use the facility to conduct VFW business and meetings at no charge. They'd get paid an hourly rate for use of VFW equipment during third-party rentals, and that was the $15 per hour mentioned that Commander Anderson commented on earlier. And also the ability to set up the VFW bar for any VFW uses or events or fundraisers, so long as they maintain their proper license and insurance and follow any of the city alcohol guidelines for the facility. The city would provide all facility operations moving forward. So it includes staffing, not only the building for customer service functions and rentals, but also onsite during the events, facility maintenance, upkeep, utilities, a lot of things that we're currently doing right now. But the full building operations would fall under the city's responsibility. Just some additional information to kind of compare where we're at. Calendar year 2022, total revenue generated at the facility was $35,744.50. If you look at the splits there, 60/40, 21 and 21 and a half approximately went to the city, 14/2 went to the VFW. There are also some VFW pass-through services that get collected at time of rental currently. Those would be additional tables, linen rentals, the bartender, not the bar service, or not the bar alcohol, but the bartender would be a pass-through that gets added on to the contract. That gets paid out directly to the VFW. None of that currently is taken in that 60/40 split. So 60/40 is strictly rental revenue on the rental fee. So you got the total revenue number there at the end. 2023, numbers went up a little bit. $57,000 was the total revenue collected. 34/3 and 22/8 were the splits. The pass-throughs got it up to 27,689. Also outlaid the, what that revenue looks like as far as total paid rentals for both of those years. And then took as a comparison, for those two years, if we were to apply the current or the new proposed agreement at the table and chair rental, what that revenue estimate would look like. So in 2022, 465 and a half hours were rental paid hours. And in 2023, 660 and a half hours were rental paid hours. So just to kind of extend out the math of the two different varying proposals or agreements. As part of the agreement, we also looked to kind of benchmark what the usage of the building kind of equates to a comparison of a nonprofit rate at the building. So we took out all of the meetings that are built in, or VFW uses that are built in for the community center, extended that out, applied again, this is for comparison purposes, applied the nonprofit rate at the community center, and came out with extended costs. This was just to build out, again, a value of the agreement. So that totaled up to $29,900. That's not rent. That's not, again, the agreement has a fee waiver for this. So this is not paid. This is, again, just for illustrative purposes of what a nonprofit would get charged for that usage. Why the proposed change? Couple main things. We're looking to improve the total overall customer service experience at the facility. Right now, if you're a customer, you have to go through a couple different channels. First, you have to come to our office at the Frank Carlton Center, check dates, go through a contract, show the facility, we have to then take them to the facility. And the actual day of event is operated by the VFW. So the customer sometimes doesn't exactly know who they're supposed to be working with for rental questions, add-ons, adjustments, or just general assistance. We're also looking to increase the facility usage. If we go back and look at the total rentals per year and the revenue, the facility is underperforming a little bit in the rental world. It's a very large facility, could be a prime facility for weddings. We have weddings, parties, all types of quinceañeras are a large event we have at the facility too. So look to increase the rental usage for the community. As I had said, improve facility operations, provide management oversight of a valuable city asset directly with city staff, and then relieve the burden of day-to-day rental-to-rental operations from the VFW, while still providing the VFW the use at the facility for their VFW business fundraisers, events, all the things they do for the veterans in the community. And the city operating maintenance costs are continuing to grow as the facility ages. Our annual utility operating expense for that facility, the estimate, based off of our utilities, is around $55,000. That's not including the current staff time that goes into that. So that's just your power, water, pest, landscaping. And then we have done some capital maintenance improvement, listed out some of the recent items that have been completed at the facility and the costs that associate with that. And as well, we are also planning additional improvements to the interior of the facility as the wallpaper has become dated, and there's some other amenities that we can do inside the facility to, again, make it more attractive for renters, namely the weddings and the larger events. So I know there's still some VFW membership leadership here as well. So welcome to take questions, comments, concerns. And again, the intent from Mr. Babrick and myself, we never wanted to outlay that the city was looking to push the VFW out of the building. The goal is to take the city facility, try and improve some of the customer service and some of the rentals that we can get into that facility, but still provide the VFW the space for, to be the home for the VFW at no charge, and allow them to continue to build their services. So available for questions.
Any questions?
Yeah. Just to give a little bit of background, I know that this has been in process for a little bit of time, and I was respectful of staff's request for commissioners to kind of stay out of the conversation with the VFW, whereas not to have five different voices kind of co-mingling thoughts as you and Mr. Babrick have these conversations. But where I was disappointed to see this was obviously on the consent agenda, because clearly, I mean, from Commander Anderson being here and his comments, I'm not sure what the rest of the people here will say. But if the people that will put ink on paper to this agreement aren't gonna sign it, we're kind of spinning wheels up here. It is the first time I've seen a consent agenda item that's supplemented with a full presentation. So that's not against you. It's just, it's interesting that we're having a consent agenda item, which typically is just kind of a breeze-through type of thing. And now we got a presentation for it and this, that, and the other. It just seems premature for us to kind of say, yep, we approve this, when there's clearly dissent from the other side. So I'll be interested to hear what the remaining of the VFW representation is. But if that's the leadership's position from the VFW, it's gonna be-
Yeah. And again, as I mentioned, right. And I apologize because we were at a point before this agenda was released. I created a staff report, had a conversation with Commander Anderson on whether, you know, we were ready to get this in front of council. He indicated he was ready to move forward. So now we're, that's where we're at now. So I think it is valuable that we're now having this discussion to kind of see where, again, I need some further direction on what course to take.
And I guess the highest priority item, and again, I don't think any, any side or however you want to, it sounds kind of convoluted when you say sides, right? It's not a side issue, but what I'm most interested in is, one of the things that was the driver of your conversation was, is the outcome of usage of that facility. So when we do a private reservation for that building, if a resident or a non-resident that's signed reservation agreement, paid money, and they expect a certain experience by their use of that facility, that should be 100% delivered every single time. So from a, from a user interaction experience, that's where I'm most interested in. All the other things are details that are negotiated between staff and the VFW leadership. But that's, you know, obviously the biggest outcome that I want to see.
Right. And that's kind of the driving force of why we started this conversation, because we have had some, some minor, some more drastic occurrences that have led to some service failures. We've had three double bookings occur in that period since September 2022. Two of them were relatively fast early on in that period. We had another one, but two of them were quinceañeras, large 300-person events, where a double booking occurred, where we had a booking that we took, a potential renter met to view the facility at the VFW, or view the community center facility, had a separate agreement that we had no idea about until right before the event, because a contract or payment deposit was made at the VFW Community Center. So we've had three of those occur over the last about year and a half. We've also had some service issues with opening the building late, the AV equipment not being accessible, even though it was tested prior to the event. So just some service challenges that, as the city staff executing the contract, we have very limited control of that side of it right now. But we're having to make cost recoveries or service recoveries to the renter to kind of make up for those events. Again, nothing, this is not a, this is not intended to be any type of slam meeting, or we're just looking to try and take this high-value facility for the community, still provide the VFW a great home to operate and do their service, but also take that burden of the, of the operation of the event side of it off of that plate so they can focus on, on their mission and their goals. And we do understand that it's a, it's a change as far as revenue side of things, because in the current agreement, it's a management. So we're paying them a percentage to manage those third-party events onsite. And that's where we've had some challenges and why we've kind of started this discussion. And it's been a ongoing discussion to get to this point.
Yeah, if I can, the AV equipment, is that replaced now?
That is replaced now, yes.
Was it replaced for the Black History Month event?
The AV equipment for the Black History Month event, I believe?
Yes. The laptop that was not-
So I was, for $100,000, I would have hoped a little bit better. But one thing too is, to Commissioner Becker's point, is that this presentation, and we discussed it, is that I would like to have this upfront, as well as I'm sure the residents would. But one thing that we didn't, that we spoke about but wasn't brought up in this is that should we move forward with this agreement, we are also taking on about $185,000 worth of additional staffing costs to run this center. So it's all upfront, but it's gonna be staged now.
So I provided, because again, to give a picture of how a facility like this would operate, I provided you a staffing plan for how that would look. Obviously, we're nowhere near the rental numbers that would require that full amount of staffing. But I want to provide you a realistic outlook of, you need somebody there for the events. You need somebody managing more than what we have right now. We have an individual, a team that manages multiple facilities. That venue, really, it's a premier venue. It should have a premier customer service representation. So again, to outlay the, the change, yes, that I wanted to make sure that was provided to you to-
Absolutely. No, and I think it's just a good full picture to see kind of what we're going into here. So not to belabor the point, but just to kind of see, express what I would want to see moving forward, and everyone else can give their opinion, is I think it's clear that the representatives of the post, and I've spoken to them on different occasions, they don't enjoy the, the management of the events, but it's their source of income. For the last 19 years, this is their business model. They still need income. So let's take off the events. We'll take that over. We need to provide a new income source for them, other than just the events that they have. So what my goal would be is to present and provide an avenue for Bingo for them to be hosting that, which I spoke to representatives throughout the city that echoed that it would be okay to do that. It gives something new for them, something probably a little more fun, something that the schedules are a little more consistent, but also provides a new source of income. We take the, the management of the scheduling of events, things like that, off their plate. But we also give them a new business model effectively. Because what this forces them to do, if we move forward with this, is for the last 19 years, you've had one business model. You have 60 days to figure out a new one. And that's a big change, and I don't think it's fair. So I think if we provide something like that, I'm open to feedback. If Bingo's not the thing, let us know what makes sense. And I know that that's been a pushback on the city's side for a while, but from my research recently, Bingo can move forward. It's an avenue for income for you guys. But also, we take over the events, run with that. And then secondarily, I want to see us renovate that building, and we discussed this. It needs quite the overhaul on so many levels to really bring that into a an event space that we can be proud of that we should be. I mean, it needs a true overhaul on many, many levels. So that would be, that's what I would want to see. I think it meets kind of both parties to get income back for you guys, but also take over event space and management for our side. I think that meets us in the middle where we need to be, and it cleans it up a little bit too. So that's just kind of where my head's at. I don't know. I'd love to hear what everyone else has to say as well.
Well, when we were talking about income, looking at the table you presented us, I see that there's kind of like an $8,000 difference in what they were accustomed to generating into what is proposed. So I'm not sure what the revenue is used for. But does that $8,000 difference hinders their operation? But then also, that's based on the number of renters we currently have. But if we increase the number of rentals, it's gonna increase their income as well. So is that not gonna be compatible to what they're doing?
Correct. I can't speak to the VFW side of that question. But yes, the, the reason we kind of came up with this model is, A, the city's not in our budget currently. We're not in a position to purchase a bunch of tables and chairs. So the VFW has equipment, banquet tables, chairs. They have kitchen equipment, same thing. We're not looking to purchase that right away. But we need to compensate them for that use. So we went with an hourly model, because the more rentals we have, the more hours we have, the more revenue comes off of that. And that would go back to the VFW. So that's why we came up with that model. And again, the goal is to take it from those 67/91, keep moving those rental numbers up and increasing those hours. So $15 is where we kind of landed at. That's open to, you know, if there's further discussion on that, we can look at that.
Well, I guess my question was, does the revenue that we anticipate they're gonna receive by going to the new model, is that going to cover whatever expenses that they're going to have?
Oh, yeah. I cannot answer that. That'd have to be a VFW question.
Commissioner Velazquez?
No, I'm gonna wait for their comments. I'm gonna wait for public comments.
Okay. Come on.
Well, we, we talk about the new-
Name an address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Pop. I'm the quartermaster at VFW Post 10147. And the quartermaster is responsible for the financial running of the post. We talk about our revenue now being 40%- We talk about our revenue now being 40% of the rentals. The city takes that away, we get zero. We talk about the $15 for the tables and chairs. We're informed by Radley that the plan going forward, not today, is to replace our chairs. So there goes our $15 in revenue for the use of tables and chairs by renters. Then we're informed that we will no longer be the exclusive bar available to renters. The bar is one of our major sources of revenue. If you take that away and all of a sudden say to a renter, do you want to hire a bar or do you want to use the VFW? That's going to take away a lot of our revenue. I will tell you right now, our liability insurance for being in that building costs us $10,000 a year. It's another $1,200 a year for our liquor license liability. So if you want to look at costs, and somebody may ask the question, well, what do you do with your revenue? Our job is to provide services to veterans. And we do that, people come in, they need money for a hotel, they need money to get back home, there's a variety of reasons, and we try to provide that assistance to them. My whole thing is, it's fine if they want to take away doing the rentals, but they're also taking away our sources of revenue, which basically says, we might as well fold up the tent. I keep hearing the phrase, we're not trying to kick you out, well, if I got zero revenue, actions speak louder than words. And thanks for listening to me.
Anybody else?
I watched Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia Street, Apopka. I, I watched the presentation by the recreation director, and in my mind, since we're dealing with money and audits, a big part's missing out of this. And that's the spreadsheet that shows not only the salary of the employees the city's going to have to hire to replace what the guys at the VFW do, but their benefits. Everybody talks about salary, oh, so-and-so makes $60,000 a year. Well, you forget, there's benefits, there's health insurance, there's other benefits that are provided, uniforms, everything costs money. Where, where's that spreadsheet? That's the first item. The second item is, I'm a vet, my father was a vet, my brother's a vet, but we're not veterans of foreign wars. These fellows are. They serve our nation, our community, and they serve it now by supporting other veterans. Now, we want to take what went from a handshake agreement to, I'm sorry, that's my glucose alarm. We want to take what was a handshake agreement, and nobody gave two bats about, to suddenly, we want to take away all of their revenue. The revenue is how they support other veterans that have fallen upon hard times. We want to add to the city budget, how much money to hire employees?
It was, it was over the $150,000.
Over $150,000 more money to provide for employees, that's just their salary. You can add another 40% to that for benefits. So we want to add 200, we don't, we're understaffed in how many departments now? And we want to, oh, we want to pull four people out of the air to put it to VFW because we want to give the boot to the veterans. Somebody needs to wake up, and it's you.
May I say something?
Sure.
It's along the lines of what you was just talking about.
Name an address.
My name is Joe Ryan, and I'm a member of the vet. Speaking about what it costs you to maintain the people to support an event, when you have an event, one thing that I do, I may be there at 8:00 or 7:00 in the morning to greet the people that are coming in on your event, I stay there until they're finished. I make sure that they get whatever they need. I do not charge you one dime. So you need to consider that when you start looking at what it's going to cost the city. Thank you.
Anybody else?
What I have to say is it's just going to take a few minutes. I'm 97 years old, member of the post, 97, a veteran of World War II and Korea, plus two Purple Hearts. So where the heck am, I come to the post, this is all we have for us, at my age, where are we going to go? So finances, I'm not going to get into this kind of stuff because what I'm trying to say is, is a little respect, to remember what we have done and show some respect. Thank you.
Sylvester Hall, 391 Rolling Hills Lane. I'm a 21-year veteran. Thank you guys for your service. When we approach this whole process, remember, I always say, keep it simple. I want you guys to make sure you incorporate these values when you're looking over this. Principles. Integrity. Honesty. Accountability. Responsibility. Morals. Ethics. Character. Leadership. That some of these veterans has given their life for. And finally, laws. Ladies and gentlemen, it's time to do the right thing. I will be here every meeting to hold you accountable for doing that. And it's an easy process. Most of these things are a personal decision by one person. And that needs to change. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. From my standpoint as a taxpayer, I think we ought to go back to, it was a handshake was good enough, how many years ago? We ought to go back to the handshake. If it's a matter of trying to produce more revenue in systems, then maybe the city takes over that end, as Commissioner Nesta talked about doing it, but I think we ought to go back to where the basics were. These veterans are the survivors of multiple wars. My father-in-law just passed away this last summer, 97 years of age, gave his life for us for the freedom that we have, so thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, close the public hearing. Look for some direction from the council.
What I don't have is some clarity as to what it is that they're not agreeing to and won't, and won't sign of this contract. I'm just going to share my view. And that is that the Apopka Community Center is a city building. And I understand for years that the VFW has been a member of that building, and they have kind of been the point person for many of the events, whether they were the outside events. But in reality, we had given, the city had given the veterans that responsibility, and, and the service was never the same for everyone that wanted to use the facility. Now, granted, I will say this, my husband Ed is a lifetime member, a Vietnam veteran. My son, I won't say his name because he doesn't want me to always give his information, but I have a son who is also a lifetime member and a veteran of two wars. So I understand about veterans. You know, for a while, I was criticized because it was said that I didn't care for veterans. I have always wanted the building to be managed by the city as it should be because of the third-party rentals. And I know that you don't realize that a lot of times those third-party rentals, they contact us, when things are not right, they contact us. And then in turn, I give all the issues to our city staff, and then it's up to them to fix whatever the issues were. And one of the main things that happened last year and this year were two big events that were double booked, and they were not learned that they were double booked until both parties literally showed up on the same day to get that hall ready. And so at that time, we have to pay for that, the city has to reimburse somebody. And I do remember, we ran around for one quinceañera, we literally ran the whole city looking to actually pay another event, another event, so that we can accommodate them. Eventually, we gave them, I believe Frank Carlton. And the person that was affected then called me up and really apologized that she was so angry, but she was thankful that we were able to accommodate her and her party. And it was a big party. So from that day on, I always felt the city should, the city should manage the third party, the third-party rentals. It had nothing to do with the rentals that, or the fundraisers that the VFW holds, it has nothing to do with your Saturdays, which you do get, those who come in for the breakfast, your weekly Wednesdays, I remember there was a time, I used to go all the time for that. You have your Memorial Day lunch, you have your Veterans Day. I attend all these things, I support them. But I, are they taking this away from you? I'm asking Radley, are we taking anything away from them?
No, ma'am.
So I, I don't understand when you said that the revenue is not going to be there for you, because you do make revenue on these things. They do make revenue.
That's, that's an in-kind, that's an in-kind comparison, they're not going to make revenue on any of this.
Well, yeah, that's what.
On their fundraisers, they do.
Yeah, that's what.
Their fundraiser, but the, like the meeting space and things like that, like, that's an in-kind kind of comparison, that's not hard dollars that are going to them, their, their membership meetings, it's not like they're getting $7,200 in their pocket. That's just the equivalent of if they were to have to rent a place for their membership meetings.
No, they don't.
It would be the equivalent of them having to pay $7,200.
But that, none of that's being taken away from them.
The ability for them to meet is not being taken away from them, correct. But it's a, it's a.
So the fun, the, the, the revenue that they're talking about that will be, go away from them is the rentals of the tables, the chairs, and the bar?
Well, the city would, in this agreement, would be renting the tables and chairs at $15 an hour, and the kitchen at $15 an hour for any of the events that are going to the community center, because that's VFW equipment.
And then on the, the bar rental, we were also talking about that they could become a vendor.
Correct, and the thought on the bar services, catering services, is to work with the finance department to put, put together a request for proposal to go out to bid to award select caterers to utilize that facility and give the customers a choice on who they'd like to use.
What I'm asking is, right now with the third-party rentals, where are they getting their catering and their services for alcohol beverages?
This, for the alcohol, for the bar, they have to use the VFW. For catering, it's not a sole source for the VFW. So it's the bar service.
So a catering can come in and they can use the kitchen?
Correct, there's a kitchen rental fee, and that's part of those, if you look at the pass-through services, there's an hourly rental fee that's passed on to the renter currently. We're trying to streamline this and make this a better customer experience, and it's VFW equipment. So if the kitchens, if the renters needing the kitchen, we're going to just pay for that as a rental to the VFW because it's their equipment.
So right now, when a third-party rental comes in, who manages their time in that facility?
So the, the rental contract is executed in our Parks and Recreation offices onsite during the event, it's the VFW managing that. So opening the building, being there for the rental, closing the building, making sure the facility is managed and has proper oversight.
So who does the cleanup? Who does the cleanup and who does any security there? I mean, who does all of that?
So VFW handles the oversight of the third-party rental. There, there are the staff onsite for any third-party rental. The shift would be, the city would take that responsibility, and we would have staff onsite to provide those services to the renter during the event.
Okay, so I, I get that. But right now, the third-party rental is being managed by the VFW group?
This is where it's, it's sticky. The rental contract and any rental questions come through our office, the VFW is the one onsite executing the rental.
Again, who does the cleanup?
The VFW does setup if it's paid for, the VFW, those are all the rental operations, the management agreement rental operations.
So do they get a percentage from that?
If they.
40%.
40%, that's the management agreement, they get 40% for providing those services. So if the city were to, if we go to the path of the new agreement, and the city were to take those services over and do all operations, those services won't be coming from the VFW anymore. So that's, that's part of what Mr. Pop was saying, those are some of the revenues that would go away in the new agreement.
How soon are we talking about purchasing tables and chairs?
The VFW actually just did a cleanup on the chairs recently, so they're in a little bit better condition. The tables are in pretty good shape, so I think the tables still got a lot of life in them, they've done a good job, I mean, they've done great keeping their equipment looking good in that respect. So I don't have a timeline, it's not in the current budget, and I think we've got other priorities for that facility other than the banquet tables and chairs for the upcoming budget proposal. That should be addressed before that equipment's addressed.
All right, so let me ask, if we increase the table and chair rentals and the kitchen rentals from 15 to $20 an hour, that would generate $26,420, which would bring them in line to what they're currently receiving?
I'm open for direction on that. We landed at 15, the initial request, I believe, from the VFW was 20, our initial was 10, we kind of met at 15. If that's the pleasure of the council to try and move in that direction to see if the VFW is amenable, we can go that route.
I mean, I, I believe the city needs to take over the facility so that it is customer-friendly and we're not receiving the backlash from those that are using the facility, but at the same time to accommodate our veterans, so.
And I, and I agree with trying to make a more in-the-middle hole on both sides. My thing is, again, we're, we're getting now into a horse trading conversation where this was supposed to be a consent agenda item. I think it'd be prudent for, you know, for us to continue to hash this out, because I don't think you're going to get to a middle, I mean, Commissioner Nesta brought up a good point about bingo for, for all intents and purposes, I mean, that could be a revenue stream that hasn't been contemplated yet. So I, I think it would be better for us to take this off and keep on grinding at it to make sure that both party, because we don't want to get into this situation where this is on the agenda and yet there's still disagreement by the people that are going to be signing this paperwork.
Correct, yeah, and we wish we'd have been at that point tonight. So we certainly, we could certainly take it back with, again, additional direction from the council on kind of the view of the council so we can try and move through this.
No, I, I like, I mean, both of the comments by Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Nesta, I think are valid to consider, right? Totally erode a revenue stream, whereas you could still, based off of consumption, still make them whole by use of their, their capital. But at the same time too, interesting revenue stream that may have been prevented in the past, but the bingo seems pretty, pretty benign to be considered. but the bingo seems pretty benign to be considered. That's another potential revenue stream for the VFW as well, so. I think it's best just to kind of take it back away.
One question that I would ask Mr. Bradley, one moment. Mr. Pop said that they pay ten thousand dollars for insurance.
Liability insurance.
So what do you actually pay for the insurance?
What do you mean?
You said ten thousand dollars.
We pay over ten thousand dollars. So we have liability insurance in case somebody gets hurt or there's.
So this, why are they paying insurance when we have insurance in that building?
So I'd have to look into that further. My guess is that the current agreement is a management agreement. So again, city staff are not on-premises when these third-party rentals are occurring, which might be why we required additional insurance on top of that. Typically with these agreements, you're still gonna have insurance tied into them because the city's gonna need some coverage in the contractual arrangement. But again, I'd have to look into this. My guess on the situation is the insurance required, because this was a management agreement, might be at a higher threshold, which, again, might require a higher premium. But I'll have to look into that.
The city is also on our liability insurance. Okay, they are included in that? So I just want to make that clear.
What now? I'm sorry.
You are also named on our liability policy, so it covers you as well.
Correct.
Okay.
So are they actually paying for a city building's insurance?
No.
No, the city has their own insurance as well.
They're only paying for liability.
And it's ten thousand dollars?
I don't know. You know, one of the things I would like to see, I mean, I've heard some things around town about, you know, the financials. We'd love to see your, you know, the last year's, you know, financials for VFW.
That's fine.
Okay.
I want to address this issue of less-than-perfect service. One of the things that bothered me, we had some of the meetings with the city, was bing, 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 boom, boom. My question is, did you ever inform us in writing of what these problems were so we can fix them? I think that's a very key point. When you complain about something, we are fully aware of the double bookings. And we're the first ones to say, we made a mess of that. We didn't try to hide behind that or make an excuse. They were errors made between the city and our commander, and he owed up to it. So that's not an issue with me. But there are other incidents that have occurred where we were not informed of those at the time they occurred. And if you're not aware of them, you can't fix them, okay? Second item I'd like to address is a comment you made, Diane. How many phone calls have you received from renters?
Oh, about six.
Six. How many have you received, Commissioner Baker?
Me personally, none.
Okay, Commissioner Smith?
Four at the most.
Okay, and Commissioner Nesta?
None for me.
Okay, so we're talking about the last couple of years with all the events that have been held at the VFW. You got, what, four to six complaints? I don't think you could classify or categorize that as poor service, particularly when some of the issues have never been brought to our attention. And they should be in writing. Just as I have told members of our VFW, if you have a complaint with something that happened to the city, send a written document or at least an email identifying what the problem is. We've had a couple occasions where the lighting outside, the lights have burned out. And I've told them, you send something in writing so that they can repair those, make them aware of that. Not just some verbal thing. I think that's the way you need to be doing business. So anyhow, I just wanted to get this issue of the commissioners are getting all these phone calls about how lousy a job you're doing. But I would have to say ninety-five plus of the rentals have been just fine. Thank you.
Bradley, to that point, if you could, we're done. Mr. Hall, we're done. We just, this is internal here. The, I know you've gotten some numbers looking back to the last couple of years. Could you just share that with all the commissioners? I mean.
As far as service challenges we've worked on, yeah, since 2022 September, we have twenty. Three of them were the major double bookings. And I'd have to go check and see how that communication was outlaid, but our staff is in contact frequently with the VFW, especially when a service issue happens, to get the VFW's side of what occurred before we try and make a customer service remedy.
And can you, the last one we had, there was a wedding that was some things I thought we'd had resolved.
Again, I don't really want to kind of air there what went wrong. I just feel like at this time, we really know that we cannot agree on this facility use agreement. I want to be able that they at least understand what their role is and that, and I'm gonna take Commissioner Nesta's kind of advices. How can we help them get another revenue stream while they are tenants in the building? Because we didn't change the agreement. They're going to have it as they did in the previous one. Were you okay with that one? That was the term, which is you have six more years with an option to extend until 2040. That remains. None of that has changed. And you were okay with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we at least accepted that.
Okay.
And I think we can live with that for the next six years.
Okay. And that's important, that you understand that you, because, right, the rumors out there is that the city is trying to take you out of the building. And I don't believe that's the intent at all. We are trying to change the management of the building, but we're not in any way trying to take you out of the building.
But if you take somebody's, all of their, not all of them, but most of their revenue away, what are you doing?
Right. You can't make a liability insurance payment with in-kind paper savings. That's what, that the expense table that what you were referring to before is all non-hard dollars. It's just benefit on paper to the VFW. You're not able to stroke a check from that savings to pay for.
Correct. That was for illustrative purposes of what a nonprofit rate at the building for the time given would equal. It's nothing to do with actual money received or actual money charged. So if I could kind of recap the direction that I've heard, explore adding bingo as a possibility, which would add some more time to the offering. Look at increasing the rental figures to twenty dollars an hour from fifteen dollars an hour. And I'll look into the insurance requirements. Again, Cliff was trying to mention that also part of that might be the fact that they are serving alcohol. So there might be some increases in that. But I'll look into that side of it to see if changing from the management agreement to a rental use agreement would change the structure of that insurance policy for what we would require.
And if I can just add to that, I think it would be beneficial to hear both, obviously, their side. I want to see what they want to redline currently on the current agreement they have because it's clear that although they've agreed to the current agreement that's in place, it's crumbs compared to what they should be making. So I want to see something that is equitable for them and equitable for us. Again, I understand the event thing, as long, and if you guys are agreeable, we can talk offline, obviously, for sure. Let's make the income you guys need and not take, if we can take stress off of you guys too and stress off of our staff, we all win, and that's the goal here as well, at the end of the day.
So if you'd like, I can work on this. We can have another meeting with the VFW. We can kind of see where we're at at that point. I can provide an update to council and see where we're at from that point.
And for it not to come back on a consent agenda.
Correct.
Come back as an item that we can.
Okay, so looking for a motion to.
Well, I'd like to hear from Mr. Hall real quick. I know he has a comment. I just want to hear from him real quick.
Yes.
My shipmate brought up the question. My whole question when I sat down was, why do we need a new contract? What is it and why do we need a new contract? And usually, when you have that, you'll understand why we need to move forward and what need to be changed. And so when he went through the complaints that everybody had, and I'm looking at, you got six, I can't remember what was the count, but is that enough to put us where we at today, to renegotiate the whole contract? And then I sit here and I look at how the city represents some of the things that we're supposed to represent? And we want to be the moral character of what is customer service? That's why I asked you to look over the list when I tell you integrity principles. You gotta do that. We missed it all. And I'm like, okay, it's gotta be something. But when he brought it up, I'm like, come on, why are we here? It's your job to find out why we're here, why that contract needs to be replaced. And if it's not warranted, we should stick to the contract as is for the next six years, period. And then apply the same principle that you're applying to the VFW to our city. We should have you in here going through the same thing. We need different representation because of the customer service that we're getting from the city. It's time for change and it's time for leadership.
All right, so looking for a motion to.
To table?
To table till the next meeting, which is April seventeenth. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Velazquez. Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, this is item 451 Commerce Park, the plat, Bobby.
Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager with Community Development Department. Applicant is requesting approval of a plat for a two-lot subdivision at 451 Commerce Park. Address of the property is located at 550 and 650 Marshall Lake Road. City maps and aerial maps are shown on the screen. Future land use and zoning of the property is industrial. The plat is consistent with the approved major development plan, construction site plan, and with Florida Statute 177, which is plating. Development Review Committee recommends approval. Planning Commission unanimously recommends approval. And the recommended motion this afternoon is approval of the plat. Be available for questions.
Any questions for Bobby? Anybody from the public which should speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to approve the plat for 451 Commerce Park.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Okay.
Second by Commissioner Velazquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay.
All right, don't start with me because I gotta run to the ladies' room.
Okay.
Why don't we just take a break until we knock this out?
What now?
We'll take a break.
Yeah, before, yeah, because I.
Commissioner Nesta, city council reports.
Absolutely. I just want to go back to, I appreciate everyone supporting the forensic audit. Ms. Sherman, in reference to timeline for RFP, does the 17th, are we able to just have that complete by the 17th?
No.
No, sir. I've got to be the scope as a list, but I need to know exactly what you're looking for in each one of those items.
Okay.
So we have to develop a scope and then we have to go through a process of, you know, finishing the RFP, then advertising the RFP. As soon as I get a scope...
No, absolutely advertising, more so that's what I'm discussing is the talent to advertise. I'm not saying...
You're supposed to have it out there 30 days, okay?
No, that's perfect, yeah, okay. So as long as I get you my specific scope or the scope for those items, you can get that RFP out to advertise.
Probably give me a couple of weeks. I mean, we got other things that are...
So by end of April?
Yeah.
As long as I get that to you?
Yeah, if you get that to me, then we'll move forward trying to get it out on the streets.
Okay.
Do you want to sign off? I'm happy to provide, but I think we should be involved in that too.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I've got a couple of items I'd like to add as well, so that'd be great.
Just let me...
Perfect. Absolutely, everyone's sending their item, that's great. So we'll work for the end of April to get that out.
To have it out on the street after we develop the scope. Now, once I get everybody's feedback, do you want me to bring that back to share this is the scope?
Sure, I mean, that's, so if we're gonna do that, then I want that back by the 17th from everyone.
Okay, well...
I think from a scope perspective, we say that because that could be wildly different for everybody, right? But generally accepted scope terms of what a forensic audit would be. I would think that there's some general accepted terms like GAAP principles, but for forensic audits.
Well, GAAP is your standard audit, which you have before you. This, when a forensic audit, as I mentioned before, is like you're looking for something. You're trying to find something. So like typically it's something that may be wrong, irregularity or something along those lines. So in regards to that, just spell out, this is what I want you to look for and this is why.
Okay, thank you.
And also, can you put, I noticed on some you put from January 2018. Can you identify the time period?
Well, so the other ones shouldn't, they don't need one. So Camp Weewalk. It's date of purchase. Date of purchase on opioid crisis payment from when we received it to now. Or when really all the paperwork that goes along with it. Anytime that was discussed, used Farm Workers Association payment, same thing. And the other ones have dates, so they all...
Just take a look at them and let me know.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, are we able to do a shade meeting for, to meet with Attorney Mandel to, now that we've had a really productive workshop with the fire union to really go over specifically what we, our thoughts, feelings, direction?
Yes, that's the one pure exception to the sunshine law. And all you gotta do is tell him through Chuck that that's what you want, Mr. Babrick. And it can be scheduled, you won't have to go through all of the fancy stuff that we have to do for a litigation shade meeting.
Okay, so we can, does it, does it have to be noticed? That...
It's noticed, but you don't have to have a court reporter. You don't have to say only these people can be there. It's always, it can be the, all of you guys, I couldn't have even been there. So, and there's no transcript of the proceeding. So it's a pure exception in that regard.
Sure. Okay, and then I know one time we did one via Zoom, so I'd like to get that going here soon. I think they're trying to meet or get back to negotiations on the 16th is what I heard. So if we can do a shade meeting before then, that's more for you guys to figure out a schedule that makes sense.
I'll have to check Mr. Mandel's schedule because I do know he was out of town. I don't know when he's due back.
He's in Europe.
I'll reach out.
Okay, he's been, he responded to an email or two of mine, so I'll, yeah, I'll coordinate with you, Mr. Babrick. Last one that I have is the, this weekend is the Apopka Murals and Main Street Apopka are hosting and organizing a downtown art walk. Starts 8:00 AM in the morning here up front of City Hall, doing a sidewalk chalk art competition with students in the area. That's something I'm hosting and we're actually gonna have a professional sidewalk chalk artist out there to do a piece for us. So I think that's gonna be really cool. That starts at 8:00 AM. Then we have an art walk market that's gonna be right behind the downtown barber shop. That's from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. And then Art on Main Street is from 4:00 to 7:00, and that's right behind the karate studio there. So a lot of cool events going on and it's just a really cool event to bring people downtown and really, really start reinvigorating this area. So that's it for me, thank you.
What time is your truck competition?
That'll be 8:00 AM, starting at 8:00 and going to 1:00.
Oh, okay. And that's Saturday.
Mr. Smith?
All right. I'd just like to recognize that this is Autism Month. And I think it's important that we recognize when we talk about DEI, it's not all about race, but it's about those groups that are not recognized and marginalized. And so this is Autism Month and that color is blue.
Okay, good enough, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know one of the things, Chief, wake up over there in the corner. I know we have, you do training every year, I know with, for autism, it's a special, specialized training that I know you've presented once or twice to this board about that, which I, you know, it's, yeah, it's a specialty that we need to keep those skills, because they are, we need to, you know, to handle them...
Yes.
You know, differently than we would, you know, a normal ones, especially in a crisis situation. So good, good information, super. That it?
That's it.
Okay, Commissioner Becker?
Keep it short and sweet. Just wanted to call out, sometimes we don't recognize them enough, the guys in the orange shirts. I want to thank them for, you know, all the repairs that they had to be, that they were faced with on Vic and Polycan. The most recent repavement finally got that intersection to a good, good final spot. It seemed like it's nice and smooth at this point, so it, yeah, it looks really good. And then I think the striping is forthcoming. And then they were hard at work yesterday or the day before on Lester, laying grass, resodding part of that roadway system. So, you know, they work in all instances, both planned events and unplanned emergencies. So just wanted to give codis to them and make sure that they know that their work is appreciated, so thank you.
Commissioner Velasquez?
Kind of short and sweet for the mayor and the commissioners here. You know that we always support the Dream Lake when they do the young scholars that go to that amazing shake competition. One of our superstar dragons made it to the top, I believe, top 10. And I know they sent us each a saying thank you for sponsoring them. So just want to say to Dream Lake, keep inviting us. It was a good show and Nester touched on everything, Commissioner Nester touched on everything that's gonna be happening this weekend. And I just wanna also, the Kiwanis Club will be having their third annual, it's the Kiwanis, Apopka Kiwanis Club with Reimagine. We're having our third annual awards banquet. And that has to do with all the schools that we sponsor between Reimagine and the Kiwanis. And what we do is we pick the top student from each of those schools. And it's like 13 schools that, believe it or not, it's a very small committee, but we sponsor 13 schools. And at the end, we pick one student from each of those schools and also their teachers, their educators. And we have a banquet where we have their families come and we just, it's a really nice awards dinner. It's gonna be held at the Apopka Community Center on, and forgive me because I had it here, here it is. It will be on Thursday, April 25th at 6 o'clock. So please go on the website, they're looking for some sponsors. Just anything that you can just kind of even send them a thank you to the young students. And 13 schools in our district. And that's it, thank you.
Chuck?
Commissioners, a couple things. One thing that I heard come up, and I'll let you know where we're standing, was trash pickup. Yes, we got behind on trash pickup and it was a culmination of a couple of things. I did authorize an emergency rental on some garbage trucks. We did have a couple go down. At the same time, the natural gas pump decided to take a dump. And on a Friday, when we had authorized them to do some overtime on Saturday to get caught up. And they went to fill up the truck and about the fifth time in to fill up the trucks, the car got flagged that it was possibly stolen. So unfortunately, that's a theft thing to just make sure somebody doesn't get a hold of one of our credit cards and run a bill up. Blanche has worked with our credit card company to take care of that. So that was what happened with that. We were working our hardest to get caught up, but there are some rental trucks that have been brought in to try to get us caught up. We'll also be coming back to y'all to make a mid-year adjustment with there, adding an additional truck driver in the garbage area. We've been notified that one of our trucks that have been on order will be coming in earlier. So we did sit down with the mayor and the mayor wants us to bring forward, go ahead and add an additional driver because we're getting that additional truck. So you'll see that coming forward to y'all shortly. So we are working very fast and as hard as we can to get all the rubbish. And of course, in Florida, spring is our fall, so all the fall leaves are falling now in the spring and they're doing their best to get them all caught up. So just give y'all an update there, so where that's at. Secondly, I did get an email from Mr. Byron Brooks. He's the county administrator. The county has proceeded and they were gonna continue forward with the current mechanism that they were using in the 22. Once it sells tax, they're not making any changes as it currently stands. I did mention to them, we are not in agreement with the current funding mechanism, that there's not enough coming back. And part of the show or the presentation he gave to the administrators and the city managers throughout the city or the county was that they would like to bring their roads, their functionally classified roads up to standards and then when they're in the city, turn them over to the city. Well, at the current mechanism, okay, they can bring them up to standard, but then they're gonna dump that on us to continue to maintain afterwards. There's just not enough money coming back to us at the current formulation that they're using. And I just want y'all to be aware, I did tell them, we're not gonna take a position one way or another. We don't agree with the current mechanism, but we're not gonna sit out there and rally against it either. So I just want to be very clear to you what my stance was with the county. They are having a meeting on April the 9th, if I remember right, to rediscuss it and look at it. But I just want y'all to be aware, they are continuing to move forward with that.
I did see that the commissioners from Orange County were each holding a meeting with their constituents. Do you know if there's gonna be one held in District 2?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're just saying, I think it's...
I don't know if Christine's got one scheduled in this area. I do know some of the others and I forwarded you the presentation. Oh, when did I talk about it? Two minutes ago, I sent it right after that. I forwarded y'all the presentation that they gave to the city administrators and city managers. So that should be in your email if you look back.
Yeah, it's April 18th at Wee Gava High School.
Oh, it is at April 18th?
Yeah, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM.
So that would be, you know, if y'all wanna voice how you feel.
Six.
If y'all want another direction or, you know, I did voice my opinion that I don't think there's enough money coming back to us.
But are there other municipalities in Orange County that are gonna do a resolution that voices their opinion or formal position?
Some are, some are taking a formal.
We're meeting, when is that? We got, I've got a meeting with the West Orange mayors and city managers, it's coming up.
And I do know there are some that are supporting in some orange, or staying mute, so.
There's no better way to advocate a position than formalize it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just the wishes of the council. Do you all want to advocate for or against or stay neutral in the center? That would be the wishes of the council.
Besides that, I think you said that one of the conditions was that they will hold the pocket of funds and then we have to go...
Through them.
To them.
Yeah, that was actually, Commissioner Becker brought it up based on the 2022...
Yeah, a meeting on April 17th at lunch.
So think about this, right? If we don't, if we take a neutral stance and the voters overwhelmingly vote to approve this, and then the next meeting, they're like, okay, what roads are you doing? Yeah, we have zero access to those funds immediately.
Yeah, and they've actually asked for a list and they have our current list from the last time I went through.
Yeah, they published our whole CIP plan on their website to attract favorable votes.
Yeah.
But if we've gotta go, you know, say pretty please every time we want some money out of this, because what's, it creates a weird situation because the voters that live in the city of Apopka are gonna inevitably come to this council
Right.
and say, hey, we voted for this, I wanna see the fruits of my vote. And if we have collectively as a body have to then go to the Board of County Commissioners and say, hey, we want, you know, $10 million for this project and they laugh at us. Or yet, they have to stack rank us against other municipalities and we're fighting for the same pool of dollars. You've just created a really weird dynamic with the constituent.
Well, that's why it's important that when we go to the meeting that Commissioner Moore will hold, you will hear from the constituents.
Why don't we do this, let's bring it back as a business item. I'll have, I guess have Pam bring it as a business item. If we want to vote as a council, either neutral, against, or for. And we'll put it all out there. So we'll put that on the agenda for next council meeting, if that's what, pleasure the board?
Yes.
Okay.
When is the next council meeting?
17th.
But she won't have a meeting today?
Right, but they've still got time, they've got time to do...
They still time, they have to have it on the referendum.
July or August.
In a decision by April the 23rd.
I think the commissioners have...
The outcome of that meeting was before we made a vote as to whether we're gonna support it or not.
Oh, you mean their commission meeting?
Yeah, the commission meeting and here with the residents has to say, I would like to hear that before we voted whether we was gonna support it or not.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Not a problem. And then lastly, I forwarded you an email that I got after speaking with the fire chief to try to run down and give me a status on, as well as Ja Engel, a status on where the NIOSH report is. I forwarded you the email that came back from CDC and NIOSH. And they are saying now that they will not have their report ready until August, is what they're telling us. Just so you understand and know, just because we don't have that doesn't mean that Ja Engel does not continue to do their work. They are doing their work, they're reviewing each and every one of the policies over there. They are also doing a checkoff list to match what the Gannon report had, to make sure that we have done or completed that in evidence to show that that's been done. So that is continuing and we are continuing with that. But as far as the NIOSH report, CDC, which is operated by the federal government, is telling us that they won't have anything now until August of 2024.
Do we know why it's delayed to August?
I forwarded you exactly what I got in an email. And with that, anything for me?
Did you put this on our table?
I did, that's just letting you know, I got a notice from Duke Energy that they're doing some rate adjustments and just if you get asked or questioned, I got the notice, so I put it there so you know.
Okay.
All right, Cliff?
Yes, Mayor. I just have a very brief report. I forwarded to you all copies of the motion to dismiss in the Duran matter that were filed by Mr. Lawton and his firm, one of the lawyers we were meeting with earlier. It is on the same grounds as the prior motion, that is workers' compensation immunity. I will be happy to discuss it with you if you'd like, but the most important line in it was highlighted and I assume it must have been highlighted by their law firm. And that is on page seven, "To date, we have not found or has the case been cited to us where an employer has lost its immunity for its conduct." And the reason that's important to cite to you now and make sure you're aware of it is, it is, in my opinion, perhaps unsolicited, that it's highly likely that case will be dismissed again. Whether it's dismissed with prejudice, which means it is over over, is another story. Sometimes judges will say you get three bites at the apple unless it is absolutely impossible to possibly stay to claim. So think about this, right? If we don't, if we take a neutral stance, and the voters overwhelmingly vote to approve this, and then the next meeting, they're like, okay, what roads are you doing? Yeah, we have zero access to those funds immediately.
Yeah, and they've actually asked for a list, and they have our current list from the last time.
List of streets? Yeah, they, they published our whole CIP plan on their website to attract favorable votes.
Yeah.
But if we've got to go, you know, say pretty please every time we want some money out of this, because what's, it creates a weird situation, because the voters that live in the city of Apopka are going to inevitably come to these, this council.
Right.
And say, hey, we voted for this, I want to see the fruits of my vote, and if we have collectively as a body have to then go to the Board of County Commissioners and say, hey, we want, you know, $10 million for this project, and they laugh at us, or yet they have to stack rank us against other municipalities, and we're fighting for the same pool of dollars, you've just created a really weird dynamic with, with the constituent.
Well, that's why it's important now, when we go to the meeting that Commissioner Moore will hold, you will hear from the constituents.
Why don't, why don't we do this, let's bring it back as a business item, I'll have, I guess have Pam bring it as a business item, if we want to vote as a council, either neutral, against, or for, and we'll put it all out there, so we'll put that on the agenda for next, next council meeting, if that's what, that pleads with the board?
Yes.
Okay.
When is the next council meeting?
17th.
But she won't have a meeting today, 18th.
Right, but, but they've still got time, they've got time.
They still time, they have, they have to have it on the referendum.
July or August.
And a decision by April the 23rd.
I think the Commissioners.
I would like to hear what the outcome of that meeting was before we made a vote as to whether we're going to support it or not.
Oh, you mean their, the Commission meeting?
Yeah, the Commission meeting, and here with the residents, has to say, I would like to hear that before we voted, whether we was going to support it or not.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Not a problem. And then lastly, I forwarded you an email that I got after speaking with the fire chief to try to run down and give me a status on, as well as Jay Engel, a status on where the NIOSH report is. I forwarded you the email, that came back from OSHA, CDC and NIOSH, and they are saying now that they will not have their report ready until August, is what they're telling us. Just so you understand and know, just because we don't have that doesn't mean that Jay Engel does not continue to do their work, they are doing their work, they're reviewing each and every one of the policies over there. They are also doing a checkoff list to match what the Gannon report had, to make sure that we have done or completed that in evidence to show that that's been done. So that is continuing, and we are continuing with that, but as far as the NIOSH report, CDC, which is operated by the federal government, is telling us that they won't have anything now until August of 2024.
Do we know why it's delayed till August?
I forwarded you exactly what I got in an email. And with that, anything for me?
Did you put this on our, on our table?
I did, that's just letting you know, I got a notice from Duke Energy that they're doing some rate adjustments, and just, if you get asked or questioned.
Okay.
I got the notice, so I put it there so you know.
Okay.
All right, Cliff?
Yes, Mayor. I just have a very brief report. I had forwarded to you all copies of the motion to dismiss in the Duran matter that were filed by Mr. Lawton and his firm, the, one of the lawyers we were meeting with earlier. It is on the same grounds as the prior motion, that is, workers' compensation immunity. I will be happy to discuss it with you if you'd like, but the most important line in it was highlighted, and I assume it must have been highlighted by their law firm, and that is on page seven, "To date, we have not found or has the case been cited to us where an employer has lost its immunity for its conduct." And the reason that's important to cite to you now and make sure you're aware of it is, it is, in my opinion, perhaps unsolicited, that it's highly likely that case will be dismissed again. Whether it's dismissed with prejudice, which means it is over, over, is another story. Sometimes judges will say you get three bites at the apple unless it is absolutely impossible to possibly stay to claim. So if it gets dismissed again, they might be given another chance, but if it gets dismissed again, it's also possible the judge could say, there's no way on the facts, as you've admitted to them, that there's a case here. And so since that might happen, and I know there are repercussions for those kinds of legal decisions, I wanted you to be aware.
All right, thank you, Cliff, appreciate it. All right, a couple of things, Planch, you know, as we talked about the forensic audit, one of the things I thought maybe would be something that the council and the public could, could really benefit from is a, I know it sounds silly, but just a, how a check gets written. So you got either Radley's getting, you know, an air conditioner fixed at Camp Weewaw, whether I'm buying supplies from, for, you know, the mayor's office, or, you know, what, you know, whatever contracts we got, so if you wouldn't mind, I'll give you my example, it's, I mean, it's, it's, you're doing your job, but, but I had a, we, we sent in a request for some office supplies, and we put on their Office Depot and go through the whole, you know, obviously it was in our budget, dah dah dah, and it got kicked back because Office Depot is now, was bought out by OP or OEP, or I don't know what, another, changed the name, but anyway, it's, it's the same company, but your finance team said, whoop whoop whoop, something, you know, their antennas go off, it's not right, so they had to, they kicked it back to us, and we, you know, so Stacy got it, you know, straightened out, but, I mean, that's just the, the level of detail that the finance department goes through to get an actual check written. So everybody thinks you just call up, hey, I need a check, I need it made out to such and such, you know, it, it, it's a, it's a process, and so many hands touch that, that, that are in that process to get that final check cut, so I, I think that'd be a good, a good exercise that we, if we could put that on the next, next week's, or next council meeting's agenda, I'd just like for everybody to kind of see how that, that process works, that would be awesome. Two other things, Thursday, April, well, let's go, excuse me, we'll start with this weekend, the Health and Fitness Fest, which will be April 6th, Saturday, from 10:00 to 4:00 PM, it's a wonderful event, it was a, it's kind of a, it happened by happenstance, the city of Apopka was doing an event, we were doing a health fair, and we double booked the Kettleland Nelson Park, but we, we, we double booked with the vegan folks, and so it worked out beautifully, we, you know, we've, this will be the third year, Radley? Third year that we've, we've combined the vegan, you know, food trucks and all that, along with our health and fitness, so it's just turned into be a wonderful event, so we're, we're excited, you know, for that coming back on Saturday. Then on next Thursday, April 11th, 10:30 AM, one of the sweetest ladies and one of the most beloved of all city employees, Miss Catherine Duncan, our chair exercise instructor will, it's her 10-year anniversary, so if you, if you get a chance, come out Thursday, April 11th, and, and just say hi and thanks for her service to the city of Apopka, because I can tell you the seniors love, love, love her. So with that, we'll.
At what time?
That, it's 10:30 on Thursday, April 11th, so love to have you come out. And with that, we'll close the, the city council meeting, and then we'll, got 10 minutes, five minutes, and we'll reconvene as the charter review.